Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to a county council meeting taking place on Wednesday the 7th of December 2022. This meeting has been broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, could I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off or make silent their mobile phones, please? Before we move to the business on the agenda, I would like to remind you of the housekeeping rules for the meeting. As in all our previous council meetings, any request to speak must be made using your voting handset. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and switch on the closest microphone to you. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of the committee services will assist. Can I ask all those attending the meeting to be COVID considerate? Should anyone wish to socially distance or wear a face covering, they still can as a matter of personal choice. Can I remind members that there should be respectful to each other during the meeting and observe the members' code of conduct? There should be no shouting or pointing of fingers, and once a point of order has been dealt with, it will not be revisited. Thank you. Finally, I would like to extend a warm welcome to the members of the public attending the meeting. You are very welcome to attend and observe proceedings. However, I request politely that you do not disrupt the meeting. Members, it is with great sadness that I have to formally report the death of a former councillor and alderman, Terry McDonald. Terry represented the Coxell Ward of Durham City Council between 1987 and 2009. Terry was also a mayor of Durham in 1995 to 96. Can I ask members to stand for a moment as we remember Terry? Thank you. Item one, the minutes. Can I have a mover and a seconder to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 19th of October 2022?
Chair, can I formally move the minutes?
And I'll second the minutes, Chair. Thank you.
Are the minutes agreed? Item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any of the items of business on the agenda? Item three, chair's announcements. Since the last council meeting, I have attended several events, including attending the Durham University International Students Welcome, hosted at Durham Town Hall, the Festival of a Remembrance Concert held in Durham Cathedral, and the Remembrance Sunday Service and Parade again held at Durham Cathedral. Moving on to some recent council successes, I am pleased to report that a community rail partnership based in Darlington in South Durham has achieved success at the National Community Rail Awards. The Shubline Community Rail Partnerships, of which Durham County Council is a partner, has been recognised for its innovative work engaging communities with their local railway line. It was a finalist in the three categories at the awards coming in second place for the most effective communications campaign, with its Pass on a Smile campaign, third place in the involving diverse groups category with its own line connections, and a finalist in the involving children and young people category with Creative Journey. A council team has won a national award for its work to help residents save money on their heating and energy bills. A Warm Homes team received the National Heating Project of the Year accolade at the 2022 National Energy Efficiency Award. The accolade recognises the achievements of the team's Warm Homes campaign, which supports low-income fuel poor households by providing grants for new boilers and installation, measures to help lower their energy bills and give them a warm home. A member of staff at the council has claimed a national award for helping to put data at the heart of the digital transformation of adult social care. Marion Ingleby, strategic manager in adult social care, won the leadership award category at this year's NHS England Digital and Data Awards. The awards recognise the achievements, particularly over the last two years, of individuals who work with the digital data technology or informatics role within health and social care. Finally, we have been recognised for our social work at national awards. Durham claimed a gold and a silver at the Social Worker of the Year awards, which special individual excellence and outstanding practice among social workers. We won a gold award for the Support of Social Work Employer of the Year, which recognises organisations delivering excellent practice as an employer, while also inspiring employers to achieve their best. Judges commented on our success in terms of staff training, including an Innovative Leadership Academy and Academy for Newly Qualified Social Workers. They also praised the council's commitments to developing an open and supportive culture, staff well-being and peer support. Meanwhile, a silver award for Social Workers of the Year was given to one of our social workers, consultant Nathan Head, who has been described as determined and inspirational. Having started his career with us six years ago as a student social worker, Nathan has been recognised for his hugely positive impact on children and young people across County Durham. I am sure the council will join me in congratulation all staff involved in the achievement of these awards. Item number four, invite the leader of the council to present her report, please.
Thanks, Chair. Good morning, everyone. As we approach the end of 2022, I'd like to take a moment to look back at what has been an exceptionally busy, somewhere successful year for the council. We have achieved a great deal across all of our services during the last 12 months. Our children's services have been rated as good with outstanding features by Ofsted, and as has just been stated by the chair, we've been recognised at the National Social Worker of the Year awards. We have launched a revised climate emergency response plan with an ambitious new target of achieving net zero by 2030. And we have also been awarded green status by Investors in Environment, the highest possible rating within the scheme. This was alongside receiving the award for overall outstanding achiever for a large organisation at the IIE Awards. We reached the finals of the City of Culture 2025 competition, generating significant publicity and interest in the county. We are also one of only two local authorities to be featured in this year's list of the UK's top 100 apprenticeship employers. All of these achievements significantly contribute to making County Durham a great place to live, work, visit and invest. I'd like to finish by wishing you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I hope you will all be able to spend some well-deserved time with your family and friends over the festive season and look forward to what I'm sure will be another busy year next year.
Do any members have any questions on the report? Can I ask the council... Nobody registered. Can I ask the council to note the report, please? Number five, a question from the public. One question has been received for today's meeting. The question is from Mr Forbes and is being displayed on the screen. Mr Forbes is unable to attend the meeting and has requested that I put his question to the council on his beefheart. Mr Forbes's question: Considering the cost of new vehicles and the council's need to save money and reduce their carbon footprint, has the council considered using technology to reduce emissions? Like the Atmos One system, which can reduce emissions and could be a green, cost-effective way forward in the current financial crisis? Can I ask the cabinet portfolio holder for the rural communities and highways to respond to this, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Councilor John Shuttler, cabinet member for rural communities, highways and community safety. To thank Mr Forbes for his question, the use of the equipment referred to by Mr Forbes was raised during the consultation on the taxi policy as one considered by officers by the Energy Saving Trust, who provided the council with their opinion on the subject. The subject raised by trade respondents and the final response can be found in Appendix Four of the report within the council minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, no petitions have been received for today's meeting. Item number seven, report from the cabinet. Can I ask the leader of the council to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. Present the report as written in the papers.
No questions have been received in respect of the report. Can I ask the council to note the report? Item eight, Treasury Management half update. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. This report provides an overview of our treasury management activity during the first six months of the current financial year and the position at the 30th of September for the council's borrowing and investments. The report meets the requirements of the Prudential Code, includes details of performance against the treasury management policy and strategy and the prudential indicators agreed by county council as part of the 2223 budget setting back in February. The table of paragraph 12 provides a summary of our overall treasury management position, and members will see it that at the 30th of September, we had total debt outstanding of £468 million and total cash investments of £418 million, our net debt position therefore being £50 million. Comparison figures for the position at the 31st of March are provided in the table, and members will see that our external borrowing at the end of September was £50 million higher than at the 1st of April, reflecting new borrowing taken out in the first half of this year. Cash investments were £76 million higher, in part due to the new borrowing undertaken earlier in the year and timing issues around the delivery of the capital programme, plus the receipt of grant funding where expenditure is to be defrayed in the second half of this year. The council's borrowing activity is detailed in sections 14 to 16, and the average interest rate paid on our external debt at the end of September is now 3.17%. An overview of our investment activity is set out in sections 19 to 22 of the report, and the table of paragraph 20 provides a breakdown of the institutions, the length of investments and the interest rates secured on those investments as at the 30th of September, and all of our investments remain in line with our treasury management strategy. In line with the requirements of the Prudential Code, the report sets out details of our performance against the various treasury management and prudential indicators, including details of our capital expenditure and financing forecasts and our capital financing requirements for the current year and the position up to the end of September. As members will see, the council continues to fully comply with its treasury management strategy and its policies on treasury management, and is meeting all the requirements of the Prudential Code. The recommendations, Chair, are set out of paragraph five and are for council to note the report.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Counselor Bell?
Thank you, Chair. Can I thank the resources director and his team for this comprehensive update on our treasury management activity during the first half of this financial year and for the information setting out our position as at the end of September? It's pleasing to note that the council has continued to fully comply with all the requirements of the treasury management policy and strategy we agreed at Budget Council in February. Carefully managing our cash flows, external borrowing and investments and maintaining compliance with the relevant codes of practice in line with our prudential framework is fundamental to delivering on our fiduciary responsibilities for public money. And I know that the team are constantly reviewing our indebtedness and investment positions and managing our cash in line with the policies we agreed at council in February. And with that, Chair, I would like to request that council notes the report.
Thank you. Can I ask the council to note the report? Item number nine, Director of Public Health. Can I invite the Director of Public Health to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members, and I'm delighted to be here this morning to present my fifth annual report as your Director of Public Health. You'll see in the report this year that we've made a bit of a shift away from the Taylor family, who was our fictional family that we described in terms of health and wellbeing, and the report really draws out on real case studies from our local residents. It's also been a year of transition. Looking to colleagues to just... Thank you. It's also been a year of transition in terms of moving from, obviously, you know, the pandemic being at the absolute form most of everyone's mind to really thinking about how we live with COVID-19 and how we refocus on some of our other pressing priorities in relation to health and wellbeing. And we've described this as a little bit of our building blocks for good health. We know, and you all know, that actually for people to live healthy and well, there are some really underpinned things such as a good home, a good education, a support family, and then things like access to health and care services. So we've started to build those around people having healthier lives, fairer lives and protected lives. This year, obviously as well, what we've seen for our residents is that they're facing new and different challenges in terms of the cost of living. And as we move into a winter that has got different infections from what we've had from COVID, so they face a different set of challenges. Thank you. We have seen, obviously, in terms of County Durham, a huge impact in relation to COVID-19, and that is reflected in the report. We've seen, obviously, that there is around about a 20% increased potential demand in terms of our children's mental health, and that it has and will be compounded by the cost of living. We saw for our children and young people, actually, they were least affected physically by the pandemic, but there was longer impact, and some of the work that we're doing through joint with Children and Young People Services, particularly around children's mental health, are going to be really important going forward. We also saw, obviously, the greatest impact on our older population, but thankfully within County Durham, our vaccination rate was incredibly high, with over 80% of our over 65s and 90% of our over 65s being vaccinated. We are seeing that slightly wane this year, I have to say, and that is going to be really important to retain a high uptake of our vaccination programmes. And a lot of that, although we have those challenges, a lot of those are balanced with the assets that we have in our communities, your communities. You know, the voluntary sector organisations that have worked through the pandemic and are now setting up work in relation to warm spaces, for example, and they are real assets and really do help to protect the health and wellbeing of our local residents. The report also covers really in-depth update in relation to health and wellbeing of people locally. And I think what we're seeing is that for the first time nationally as well, that, you know, health is almost starting to put a bit of the brakes on developments in other areas, because you can't have, you know, good health actually equals good wealth and vice versa. And for us in County Durham, we still have some of those significant challenges in relation to our local residents, both living a long life in terms of their life expectancy, and you can see from this slide that life expectancy is around 81 years for females, 77 for males. But actually, something that's really important is the years of life lived in good health, which for both males and females is just below 60. And the priorities that we have in terms of health and wellbeing are there to help us improve that, both in terms of life expectancy and healthy life expectancy. And you do also see in the report some of that gap within County Durham, which is why for some of our programmes of work, we need to target them towards certain work with some of our communities. The report also sets out health and wellbeing across County Durham. I can think of you. So, and there's some really positives in here as well, so we know that, for example, our screening programmes, for example bowel screening, which is identified there, our uptake of screening programmes is above the national average, and across the board for the majority of our immunisation programmes, we are above the national average. However, we can't hide behind the fact that we still have some real significant challenges in terms of, for example, our women who smoke during pregnancy and the support that's provided to them. And I think that kind of wave of mental health problems is again a significant priority. Thank you. We haven't had a approach endorsed through the Health and Wellbeing Board for several years now, which is our approach to wellbeing, because there's something about having those challenges, but it is also about how we address those. And the approach to wellbeing, which has been evaluated this year, so we're really learning as we go and what works with it and what doesn't work, is about working with our communities and not doing to our communities, because we know outcomes are better if that's the case. And you'll see several examples in the report, but the one highlighted here is our Mental Wellbeing Alliance, where several of our organisations who focus on good mental health and wellbeing have come together in an alliance, and they are telling us rather than us giving them a contract about what is important to local residents. It's a really innovative and different way of working, and we'll be monitoring that to see how it works. But it's a real example of how we are working with our communities and not doing to. As we think and reflect back on the pandemic and how we live with COVID, we have moved from that response to actually thinking about how we live with. from that response to actually thinking about how we, how we live with. And I guess just what I wanted to draw out in, in the report was just how people had worked collectively across County Durham. I know it's featured in the last two reports as well, so this is really a summary. And, you know, for me, in terms of us, over one and a half million tests out to people and particularly thinking about our more at-risk populations, so some of our care homes, some of our prison settings, particular communities, we've managed to mobilise those on an ongoing basis. The contacts that we had with our schools were, you know, really extensive and that has really stood us in, in good, in good stead. And again, with the vaccination programme, it's now been about maintaining that. And you'll see in the report as well, some, some kind of Covid heroes and, and Covid champions, and there's a couple of examples here, and certainly, I've had the pleasure of meeting Alfie with his family when he came and received his award for the work that he'd done during, during Covid. I guess this year of transition in terms of health protection has also seen us deal with a whole range of other issues which are identified in the report, including avian influenza, meningitis pathway, planning for winter, monkey pox, flu and obviously currently Group A strep, for example. So the work continues. In the report, and it was a recommendation from last year, was to make smoking history. We've just had updated figures of our smoking prevalence, they've been adjusted because how it was collected was different during Covid, and actually our prevalence is around sixteen percent rather than fourteen percent, which is in the report. So it's declining, but it isn't declining quick enough. It's the biggest and single most impact on our health inequalities and on people's quality of life, and we would really like to see smoking become history in County Durham. You can see how it impacts on poverty and on the health and wellbeing of people and also how it impacts on productivity in the workplace. People in routine and manual groups are twice as likely to smoke than, than people in, in other groups, so that leads to sickness and impact on our local businesses. So really important that we retain the prominence of, of smoking. We have got a really extensive and well-attended local tobacco alliance and reaching out for these seven strands. We also are the lead commissioner for Fresh North East, which is our regional tobacco control office, and we are one of the only parts of the country that have managed from next year to achieve funding from all of our local authorities and matched with our integrated care board NHS partners, funding for Fresh. So, you know, the potential of making smoking history is on the horizon if we continue with the work that we're doing. And again, just like in the rest of the report, we've got two examples here of, of local residents who wanted to share their stories so that other people can learn, and Cathy's in particular wanted this story shared here today in terms of the advice to never think that it can't happen to you. And I think the real examples are really important for other people to, to really understand the impact of smoking and hopefully to stop young people from ever starting to smoke. Then we've got priorities looking ahead based on those kind of building blocks around healthier, fairer and protected, and what you'll see in the report again are some really, you know, great examples of the work that's taking, taking place locally. So there is an example there around a programme of work around mental health called Now You're Talking, designed with local people, evaluated by local people who recognise the Now You're Talking, and that's about getting people talking about, about mental health. The work of our Health and Wellbeing Framework in our schools and schools, thinking about their own priorities. So for, for Oxfords, that was about work in their lunchtime period. For others in the report, you'll see it's around, around mental wellbeing. And then in the third area around some of our work on domestic abuse, and we've, we are one of few authorities that have been accredited, white ribbon accreditation for our work, but this is particularly sensitive. And you can pop onto the next slide, it kind of doubles up this slide. And this was about young persons' abuse to parents, which is a really difficult subject to address, and I think we're addressing those difficult subjects. And you'll see from the case study that the Respect Programme that Talia was part of through our Young People's Services has really made a difference to, to her family's life. So in conclusion, this report is, is for noting for council, we're really thinking about those building blocks for good health, you know, how important health and wellbeing is to every single resident within County Durham. It's really important that every part of our council and our partners prioritises health and wellbeing, and I can only do my job by working with others, and, and we've seen some really amazing examples of the work that's taken, taken place throughout twenty twenty-two to hopefully improve and make people's lives healthier, fairer and protected. So thank you, Chair.
Do any members wish to speak on the report? councillor Hood?
Thank you, Chair. councillor Chris Hood, portfolio lead for Adult and Health Services. I'd like to thank Amanda Healy and her team for this comprehensive report. As always, it ensures that the health and wellbeing of our residents remains a top priority for this council. The report reflects what we are doing to support people in living longer and healthier lives. I'd like to place on record my thanks to Amanda and all of the officers involved in the production of this report and for the hard work and effort that underpins it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Howie?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, stand up, sorry. Thank you, Chair. Just want to ask a question. Are we able to go into schools to discuss things like the smoking situation? Just with you having councillor Cathy Hunt on there, obviously she's just been in hospital last week for removal of part of her second lung, so she's now not got a full lung at all, and she's desperate to go out there and spread the word even more now than ever. So is that something that we can do, go out there to schools, make them more aware of situations such as these, please? Thank you.
Thanks councillor Howie. And I mean, I think the fact that Cathy's come forward to share her story is, is really important and Cathy's hopefully going to be part of the fresh work, which is around, about denormalising smoking and, and getting us to the point where we, we can see it as, you know, that we do not have people smoking in County Durham. But when I showed the slide of the kind of strands of work under the Tobacco Alliance, a lot of that work, particularly around, is focused predominantly at adults because we know that the best way to stop young people from ever starting to smoke is to reduce smoking in adults. So actually, a lot of work in schools, you know, we don't do a lot of educational work because it hasn't proven to be particularly effective. However, the strands of work are there. We've got a wide range, you know, our trading standards and illicit tobacco work, our broader campaigning work, our work during smoking and pregnancy, so there's a huge amount of work that we could be doing and can do, and happy to have the conversation about where that's best placed. But the best way of stopping young people starting is for us to get our adult smoking as low as possible.
Thank you. councillor Boyes?
Thanks, Chair. Thanks for that report, Amanda. Yeah, the, like, life expectancy figures, they seem to have stalled after year-on-year increases for the last hundred years or so, but more concerning to me is the, the gap in the healthy life expectancy between somebody living in County Durham and the rest of the country. It's about four and a half years now, I believe, so somebody living in County Durham is going to live, even if they do reach an older age, they're going to have at least four and a half years longer than somebody else in the rest of the county now. That's, that's concerning. Now, I accept you're saying we need to get in about smoking, but reports are saying that the, the number of people smoking is the lowest ever now, now, but the increase in vapes, I don't know if that's a concern, whether that's a health concern, whether that's being addressed, and the gap between the more affluent areas and the more deprived areas. Have we drilled down to say this four and a half years, if it's even worse in the most deprived areas within the county? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Boyes. And yeah, absolutely, I think it is something that's been seen nationally in terms of the increase in life expectancy and life expectancy has started to stall, and certainly the work that we do, working with, with all of our partners, for example, through the Health and Wellbeing Board, but other partnerships as, as well, are to really focus on the priorities that will address that gap in life expectancy and healthy life expectancy. And some of that are some of the underpinning, you know, just said about those really good building blocks to good health, which are long-term, you know, and then there are some shorter-term things which, which we can work on collectively, you know, prevention of risk from heart disease and cancer, for example. And then, and then slightly different, some of the external factors, some of our mental health and suicide prevention work, which is more targeted to, to, to men, for example, than women. So we're really trying to nuance some of our approaches to address those gaps and use our local data and intelligence as well as conversations locally to do that. Some of that learning from the pandemic where we had a huge amount of, of information and things like our community champion. So, so our programmes of work are definitely more targeted towards greater, greater levels of need, and the priorities that I've identified in, in the report should be those that address those gaps in, in healthy life expectancy, as well as working with, with colleagues on other areas such as, you know, access to good work, for example, and there's some really interesting work taking place there with mental health employment support workers, for example. So, you know, it is about looking at those priorities and seeking to address that gap.
councillor Charlton Lane, please?
Thank you. I was going to ask about vaping as well, and I know that because of the catchment areas within schools that have high levels of deprivation, the children that can't afford cigarettes are turning to vapes because it's cheaper and easier to get hold of, and I just wondered that with the question about going into schools, I don't think we should be only focusing on smoking, but we should be educating on the effects of vaping as well, especially for young children because they're, they're the most prevalent age group that are vaping at the minute. And the other thing that's coming out of schools is kids are using nitrous oxide as well, and I know that there's a lot of work being done around that with the PCC and children, but that could also, like, the long-term effects of using NOSS gas could be looked at as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I'll start with the last bit because we've certainly, in terms of the nitrous oxide, the, the PCC has just chaired one of the first our combating drugs partnership, and we've actually talked about drugs and alcohol in County Durham and Darlington, and we've completed a needs assessment and looking at what those local needs are. So certainly that is part of that, that overarching plan and certainly, again, with our local drug and alcohol treatment services, and particularly the work that they do with young people and young adults, has a particular emphasis on, on nitrous oxide. In terms of vaping, the, the evidence is, is really strong that actually vaping is much less harmful than smoking, and actually there's a misperception particularly among smokers that it, that it isn't less harmful, so that's definitely something that we need to get over. We're really mindful of, obviously, where industry would be targeting new markets, for example, and certainly with young people, what we, what we don't want to happen is that young people actually start to vape. If young people are smoking, we would still rather they vaped than smoked. We've recently, across the North East, sent a, a statement out to all of our schools, so although we don't go into schools, we keep our education colleagues up to date and happy to obviously share that potentially with councillors. You also have got the most recent and, and understandable evidence, there was, the, the piece that came out was about nine hundred pages, so thankfully somebody digested that for me too. So that could be shared, so people understand the risks and benefits of vaping. And we do have a dedicated scrutiny session talking about tobacco, and that came on the back of questions about vaping, so more than happy to share further information, both to hopefully dispel some of the myths, but also some of the action and how vaping can be used to, to help people to stop smoking, but that we don't want people to start using vapes if they're not using anything else. Hope that helps.
councillor Hovell, please?
Thank you, Chair. Please bear with me because I do have an irritating cough, so I apologise if I start coughing. However, I've got me sweets and me water handy. I value the important work that you do. Obviously, the work that you and your teams done have really helped us throughout this period of time, which, which you say the, the Taylor family and the work that's been undertaken. I think it's always appropriate to send our thanks to the team and to yourself because the work that you do do is the prevention work, and the prevention work stops us getting the long-term health problems that we all experience, and your role and your team influences policy, our policy of this council, and we shouldn't, shouldn't lose sight of that. And obviously, you've been at the front end of the Covid and obviously now we're saying people have got to live with it. I'm quite interested to see what research is being done. I know the programme's running at the moment, but it's some future date. I'd like to see what research of the effects of the Covid, Covid's had on people's health because I'm sure with the figures it'll be startling, because obviously it affects your lungs and, and it gives you other long-lasting health conditions, which I think will be of interest to people. And the other point I wanted to raise was around the warm hubs, because I know we've got the warm hubs, and I don't want to glorify them because I think we could probably do without them if, if we had the finance to be able to keep ourselves warm. However, I'm just wondering what work is being done in terms of the harder-reach people, the people that we do talk about within the report, the mental, the mental health sufferers, people who suffer from drug abuse and also men's groups and, you know, that list of that core people that slip through the net, which I know councillors pick up on a daily basis, I certainly am, and really...
One minute councillor.
...get them to the warm hubs. So I do think we need to look at that, and I would hope in some future report we may see that, Chair. Don't expect a direct answer to that now, but I think it's important points I raise. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Kay?
Thank you, Chair. Before I start, some of you may already know, and those of you who don't know, I'd like you to know that I actually have a mental health disorder. I have type two bipolar disorder. You can laugh, you can mock me, to be honest, I don't really care, but I think you need to know that because I'm a service user, and I found your report, no disrespect to you, Amanda, but I found your report a bit self-congratulatory and disrespectful to look at. I couldn't see, as a service user, where are the outcomes for me? I'll tell you now, last week, Bishop Auckland, viaduct, another nineteen-year-old, when you're at your lowest ebb, when you can't even get out of bed sometimes, that's when you have to fight to get access to mental health services. How somebody in that mental condition is supposed to get to where they need to be is beyond me, to be honest. It really is, it's beyond me, and I want to know what we as an authority can do to simplify and smooth the path for people who have got a clinical diagnosis of, of depression or whether it be anxiety, it doesn't really matter. From getting them to there in front of the people who really do matter to them, like a psychiatrist, it takes a long time, and in the meantime, we lose people because of that. And companies like to make a big play about how they're, they're mental health friendly, you know, they do this for their employees, they do that for their employees. There's a company in the North East that regards itself as blue chip, it's not this place, regard themselves as blue chip, and they had a guy who was off with a prescribed mental health disorder for six weeks and came back to a warning for his time off. Now, to me, that's outrageous, and that's, I'm taking that elsewhere, to be honest with you. So, long story short, what are we doing to make it easier? It's all very well, you know, coming here and presenting reports, well-written reports, I have to say, and with a wealth of information in them, but they don't actually, to me, they don't actually say anything. It's, it's look how well we've done. Well, you've done well at what? Because the outcomes to people on the ground don't make any difference. So what I'd like to know is, what can you do to make any difference? How can we make it easier for our people to go from the first diagnosis or even just not even being diagnosed, to get in to that secondary health, you know, the mental health, we're Eskentees, Tusk, they provide good support, and, but getting into them, getting on their books is very, very difficult. And because, to be fair to them, they're understaffed and they're quite overworked, I have to say, but that's not, that's not the answer, that's just a problem. We need a solution to that problem. Finally, I was just going to say, I think my time might be coming up here. But you'd all like that, wouldn't you? Anyway, there's a group, a nationwide group that have several sessions in County Durham, and they're called Man Health. I don't know if any of you have heard of them. And I have to say now, you can take lithium, you can take Prozac, you can take pregabalin, you can do whatever you want, but the one thing that works is getting people together and talking. I can't overestimate, underestimate, sorry, how important that is, and so I'd like to think that we could do something to support groups like Man Health, who are a CIC, they're not-for-profit, to achieve and what are very tangible goals. And finally, I'm going, I'm going, I'm going, I know of the two people who've told me that without Man Health, they'd have committed suicide. They'd have been the next ones on that viaduct. We've got to stop it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. I mean, I think certainly in terms of the report, it was never intended to be self-congratulatory. I think it was, we really wanted some of those local stories to come through. Mental health is a real priority, and it is a real priority for both us within the council, but also for all of our partners, including the Tees Esquire Valley Trust, who you mentioned. And there is a partnership that meets that really focuses on those issues, including the prevention of suicide and response to those very, very sad deaths. That work in the community and close working with groups like Man Health, who we are working with, are really, really important. So more than happy to provide more detail of the specific work that we're doing in relation to mental health. And I guess just to reiterate that it is a real priority for us. I guess one example, which was the Now You're Talking, was developed with local people and was really aimed at trying to get people to talk about mental health, just as you stood up and said that this morning, to get more people to do that, to break that stigma, so that we can do that prevention, rather than all of it focused on the crisis end. We are, however, doing work at that crisis end, and we are doing work particularly in relation to the suicide work at Bishop Auckland. And again, happy to share further details of that work with members after the meeting today.
councillor Elmer.
Thank you, Chair. councillor Elmer, Brandon Division. Thank you for your report, Amanda. I'd echo councillor Hovell's words on that in relation to how valuable it is. I wanted to drill in into one particular aspect of it, and that's in relation, I note that you've created a County Durham avian influenza framework. I don't know whether members are fully up to speed on this issue, but to me, it's a really important matter because of the potential for avian flu to mutate into something that's transmissible between humans. And if it does do that, then, you know, the mortality rate, we already know, is actually much higher than COVID. So this is a serious matter, and the government's taken steps, obviously, to make sure that, for example, if it's detected in flocks of domestic birds, chickens in particular, then the entire group of chickens is destroyed. But there's a flaw, really. What I see is a serious weakness in the national governmental response, and that's that these same really quite tight restrictions don't apply to game birds. Now, game birds, particularly in County Durham, we have a big game bird industry. So at the moment, yes, those restrictions apply when the birds are in captivity, they're raised in captivity, and then they're released in very large numbers into the wild. So there's potential for spreading that virus across the country. It's about 50 million birds each year are actually released into the wild. So I'd like to have a little bit of reassurance, I guess, in terms of whether or not you've directly engaged with the game bird industry in County Durham in terms of the framework that you've created.
Thank you. In terms of, I mean, our framework is, it is really helpful to have that locally, because when we do see an outbreak of avian flu, you're right, we have to respond really rapidly to ensure that there is no potential transmission to humans. At the moment, I don't think we're directly engaging with the game industry, but definitely we'll take that away and talk to colleagues. We work really closely with our colleagues at the UK Health Security Agency, obviously our environmental health officers, the animal health organisation, so I will go and double-check that and also see what works happening nationally. But certainly locally, I think we've got a robust response, including rapid access to antibiotics for anyone who may have come in contact with birds who would be affected. But I'll definitely double-check that and come back to you, councillor.
councillor Marshall.
Thanks, Chair. Just before I ask me questions, I'd just like to put on record our group's thanks to Cathy Hunt and to Charlie Kay for very bravely sharing very personal stories with the general public across the county and with us today in the chamber. It's a very brave thing that you've both done. And I'd like to also wish Cathy the very best in her recovery from her recent surgery. Sorry not to say her here today. I think I wanted to pick up on the point that councillor Boyce raised around health inequalities, Amanda, because as we all know, health inequalities across the county, it's a postcode lottery, wherever you're born in County Durham, you know, there's a good chance you're going to die a lot earlier in some parts of the county than others. And it's always been a big part of the work of the public health team to look at targeted interventions in those communities, and there's very little reference of that today. And I just wonder, after 12 years of government cuts and austerity, a COVID pandemic, and then as we approach into a winter of discontent, what the impact on our communities of all of those combined things are, and whether or not there's been any research done, or it's intended to do any research into the impact of austerity on our communities from a public health perspective. And the second point I wanted to make was that obviously, staff across public health and the NHS, who kept the country going and saved many, many lives during the pandemic, despite 10 years of cuts leading into it, in my view, being ill-equipped to deal with the pandemic, you know, they've all gone above and beyond. We'll see what's approaching, will strike action being taken by nurses, ambulance workers, because they've never had a pay increase for 10 years with inflationary pressures, problems with recruitment. I wonder how prepared we are across the partnerships of public health for the winter that's coming up. It's very worrying to see that we're now expecting the health service to pay for energy bills to keep families warm over the winter.
You have one minute left, councillor Marshall.
Thanks, Chair. When it appears the government's abandoning them. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Marshall. And I really take on board your points around health inequalities and how to really draw that out and potentially more in next year's report, because it is absolutely part and parcel of the work that we do. You know, an example that we're busy looking at currently is our fair access to our stop-smoking services and actually, are people reaching and accessing the services from the areas of greater deprivation, for example? So there are some of the tools that we use to look at that. There is quite a wealth of research in terms of, particularly at a, you know, at a North East and a North level, about the impact of, you know, both, I guess, austerity, but also ingrained long-term health inequalities. You know, I'm thinking of the work from Claire Bambra, who's at Newcastle University. So various reports that have been published on that. And I think obviously, that does show that a lot of those things have been entrenched, but also they are things that we can make a difference to as well. We have seen the impact of COVID. And I guess I did want to put smoking back at the forefront of the report, because I did see that is the biggest impact that we have on health inequalities. 50% of health inequalities across County Durham is made up from our population who smoke, and while we're at 16%, actually, you know, to get down to 5% is over 40,000 people giving up smoking. And that would have such an impact on, it would lift people out of poverty, it would help people in the workplace, it would obviously help with their health and wellbeing. So they're definitely some of the things that I will think about and obviously can share some of the research. I think in terms of winter, I think we've worked really closely, obviously, we always work really close with NHS colleagues, and they have their plans and with social care to look at how we're planning for winter. I think we've learned quite a lot, again, from the pandemic in terms of sharing data and then ensuring people, like on the Priority Services Register, that there are interventions. And again, working very much with our local community groups on that, who mobilised so quickly during the pandemic, ensuring vaccination rates are as high as possible, make sure our cold weather plan is ready, and, you know, there was a Level Three alert that's come out, and that's shared with actions for people to take. So I think we are doing as much as we can collectively, with every partner taking their responsibility within that planning and readiness for winter, against the backdrop which you described.
councillor Shirley Quinn, please.
Thank you, Chair. councillor Shirley Quinn from Shilden Dean Valley. I just would like to say some work done around obesity. I've suffered through that throughout my life, you know, I'm not sharing this just willy-nilly. It has been a real battle for me. I didn't have a good diet as a child, and I know many of our children across the county have got inequalities and having to have poorer choices and poorer diets, you know, mainly bulking up on fatty things, pastas and rice sorts of dishes to fill them up, breads as well. So I would like to see a little bit more work done around the obesity. I've actually had surgery last year, which, you know, wasn't an easy decision to make, but it was the right one for me, and thankfully I've come through it, you know, with a successful outcome. And my life is rosy at this moment in time, and I can see so many more advantages for having that surgery. I know it's not something that everybody wants to consider doing, and maybe if we are educating people, which, you know, I know there's a great deal of good work does go on through the county and with partners of the NHS and other authorities. But I think we do need to have a little bit of a more push on the obesity line. I just want to say as well, as regards to your report, I'm the County Durham representative on the National Association of Councils. I was just at a conference a couple of weeks ago, and County Durham is always favourably talked about in the work that we do in County Durham. We are actually above there, and we have been doing this work for a number of years, you know, and we are recognised across the country for the work that we do in County Durham. So just long may that continue, and I am ever so proud to be on that board, you know, and representing the council at those meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. There's nobody else requested, sorry.
No, sorry, it was in terms of councillor Quinn, you know, the work around healthy weight and physical activity, you know, and obesity is really important, and we have seen an increase, you know, through and due to the pandemic. So we're just refreshing, oh, there was a consultation out on our physical activity strategy, which is about getting everybody moving, and that, I think, just closed yesterday. And we're really looking at our work around healthy weight, which, yeah, I identified some of the issues there in terms of food provision, you know, we still weigh and measure our children in the school setting, and we're looking at how we support families in relation to that. But a lot is also to do with our broader policy agenda, you know, and we do have a really clear policy in County Durham around hot food takeaways, for example. So it's definitely going back up the agenda, but I will take that away and make sure we double our efforts.
councillor Chris Barty, please.
Thank you. Like my colleague, I will apologise if I start coughing. We talked about partnerships, and one of the partnerships is our surgeries. Now, some of my colleagues in here know that I look after an older lady who's just turned 90, and the local surgery kept sending her letters to say she had to go for her injection for COVID booster. She's in a wheelchair, she's just about deaf, and she's just been registered blind. Lovely. I'd love to know how she's going to answer the letter. Three letters came. I rang each time to say, sorry, that this lady told them, oh yeah, we'll sort it out. So the eighties went, the seventies went, the sixties, the fifties went. I kept ringing, oh yeah, we'll sort it out. So one day, not being the usual calm person that I normally am, I went and her phone and I blew. I'm sorry. I said, listen, you've said you're going to sort it out. That was so many weeks ago. This is, this is happened. 15 minutes later, two doctors turned up to give her injection, but it was shaming them that did it. And that's a partnership for you. Thank you.
Would you like to respond, Amanda?
I mean, just to say, it's awful, you know, to have that individual case, anything like that, you know, ourselves or colleagues in the NHS would prefer to know about it, because we can then ensure that that practice is responding, because certainly housebound patients were top of the list of people who, you know, for people to go out to. So those individual cases, we would really want to know about, because that is where the priority, you know, should be. So I'm sorry that you've had that experience, and, you know, hopefully we'll work with NHS colleagues to learn from that as well. Thank you.
There's nobody else requested to speak. Can I ask the council to receive that report, please? Item number 10, review of the council's hackney carriage and private hire licensing policy. Can I ask the corporate director of neighbourhoods and climate change to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. This report requests adoption of the revised and updated version of the County Council's hackney carriage and private hire licensing policy, more commonly known as the taxi licensing policy. The taxi policy is updated every five years, and over the last period, officers have kept the policy under review and identified the matters that required consideration for this next revision, including those changes in national guidance. This process resulted in proposals that were subject to consultation towards the end of 2020. Following a 12-week public consultation, the responses and representations received were appraised, and the outcome of this initial consultation exercise, together with several proposed changes to the policy, were reported to the General Licensing and Registration Committee in September of 2021. While a policy could have been adopted at this point, the revised policy was deferred in order that a further short consultation could be held to ensure that the full effects of the COVID pandemic on both the taxi trade and on the travelling public had been taken into account. Separately, in March 2020, the government launched its own consultation on Taxi and Private Hire Vehicle Licensing Best Practice Guidance for licensing authorities in England. The outcome of this consultation was also needed to be assessed before bringing forward a new policy locally, and officers engaged with Department of Transport officials over the timing and the implementation of our second consultation. The results of the final consultation were presented to the General Licensing and Registration Committee in November of this year, where members agreed the final revised version of the policy, and also agreed to recommend it to council, that the adoption of the modified policy come into operation on the 1st of January 2023. So this extensive consultation process demonstrates the council's listen to the taxi trade and to the travelling public, fully considered their responses and opinions and requests that have resulted from this consultation process. The consultation responses are presented in full in Appendix Four and the revised policy in Appendix Two of the report. The main updates to the policy as a result of this work are as follows. With regard to the updated vehicle emissions and manufacturing criteria for new applications, new applications for vehicle licences will only be accepted for vehicles manufactured to the emission standards of Euro six or above. The version of the taxi policy previously considered by committee in 2021 had recommended the implementation of proposals relating to Euro four and Euro five emission standards. These concern the licensing of such vehicle renewals after the 1st of January 2023 and the 1st of January 2024 respectively. However, given the outcome of the second consultation, committee members agreed to extend these timescales to 2024 for Euro four and 2025 for Euro five vehicles, and these are now incorporated into the policy document. These updated vehicle emission standards provide for the phasing out of older, more polluting vehicles over time, while a time period for this has been extended to allow the taxi trade more time to renew their older vehicles, taking into consideration economic factors and the effects of COVID. In addition, the committee wished to avoid potentially disproportionately affecting wheelchair-accessible vehicles, and it was agreed that this type of vehicle should not be subject to the general emissions control conditions. The revised policy also allows for the removal of locality testing requirements for private hire drivers, although knowledge testing requirements still apply. There are also changes to regulations around the carrying of fire extinguishers in vehicles, and the policy includes the adoption of an updated policy on offences to bring previous local guidance up to date with national guidance. There's a provision for training related to safeguarding and disability awareness, and there are changes to the rules on displaying deckles. In conclusion, the revised policy, which has been recommended to council for adoption by the licensing committee, has been produced following a thorough comprehensive consultation process. It incorporates best practice, and it aims to strike the right balance between the matters necessary to achieve public protection without making the application process unnecessarily difficult or onerous. It will provide members with the confidence that only fit and proper people and suitable vehicles are licensed, which is the council's legal duty. And the policy has been subject to an initial equality impact screening assessment, which has taken into consideration the current taxi policy and the proposed provisions to the policy as agreed by the committee. The final policy is presented in Appendix Two, and the recommendation in paragraph 11 of the report is to agree to adopt the new policy with an implement- of the report is to agree to adopt the new policy with an implementation date of January 2023.
Thank you. Can I have a mover to adopt the final version of the policy to come into operation on the 1st of January 2023? Councillor Shuttleworth?
Thank you, Chair. The policy that's presented here today has been developed over a considerable period of time and incorporates national best practice and updated government guidance alongside regional work and the results of a significant public consultation within the county. The decision was taken earlier this year to provide further time to consult on the potential effects of the Covid pandemic on the implementation of this policy. It was right one and has been shown to have been useful for both passengers and the trade. The resulting policy has been developed following careful consideration of all these matters by our General Licensing and Registration Committee, and it is their recommendations that have brought here today. A committee which is a cross-party committee and 14 members made that decision. This is a considerable piece of work, and I would like to thank the members of the committee for their ongoing dedication and commitment in this area. Developing a policy such as this can be challenging, with many interests to consider and to balance. And I know that our committees work hard to ensure the best interests of the public are given the utmost importance. There are a number of updated clauses within this revised policy, which are designed to enhance the safety and protection of the travelling public and to improve environmental standards. Where new measures have been brought in, they have been phased in and allowed time to adapt where appropriate. The revised policy is well balanced and takes our licensing regime forward in line with our corporate priorities. I therefore propose this policy for adoption to the council.
Thank you. End of second, councillor Stoker?
Second, Chair.
Does any member wish to speak on this report, please? Can I ask the council to approve the report? Oh, sorry. Councillor Marshall?
Thanks, Chair. Some members of the council have received an email from one of the groups representing taxi drivers in County Durham this morning. It's got quite a lot of detailed information. And I'm just wondering whether the cabinet member would agree to meet with the Taxi Driver Association face to face to talk about the issue that they've raised in the correspondence with us. Thanks, Chair.
Councillor Shuttleworth, would you like to respond?
Chair, as I said before, there's 14 members made the decision. Eight Labour members are present. I'm not aware that any of them were against the recommendations in the General Licensing Committee. So what it is, it is.
Councillor McEwan? McEwan?
Sorry, Chair. Can I raise a point of order? I don't believe I received a straight answer from the cabinet member, other than it's nothing to do with me, even though it's got my name on the report and everyone's had a chance to have a say and it's going through. I didn't get an answer whether you'd meet with this association. Obviously, on behalf of the Labour Group, I'm going to go and meet these taxi drivers and speak to them and listen to what they've got to say. But I think it would be really, really good if I could be accompanied by the cabinet member whose name's on this report on behalf of this council chair.
Councillor Shuttleworth, would you like to reply to that, please?
Chair, I've removed a report that's been approved by the General Licensing Committee. The chair of that committee is here. She's put a request in to speak. If you only listen to Mrs Blakely, that's fine. And I believe the officers did meet with the taxi people as well.
I think councillor Shuttleworth has responded to the question. You might not like the response to the question. I suggest it's taken outside of the meeting. We have other members registered to speak. Sorry, just to clarify. Councillor McEwan, do you want to speak?
My point was covered in councillor Marshall's point of order.
Councillor Neville Jones?
Thank you, Chair. I'm only new to this council, you know, and but I'm a passenger transport operator myself. You know, I don't think further restrictions on taxis is a good idea. I would like it noted, please, in the minutes that I don't agree with this, you know, you're putting your hands on these lads next month. Euro six, when we haven't even got a clean air zone in Durham, so why are we insisting that taxis go clean? It's, I'm sorry, I don't agree with it. Thank you.
Councillor Blakely?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Unfortunately, I had to chair the meeting where this decision was made unanimously with all our members. The members of the taxi people were there, including the gentleman who sent the email this morning. One of the recommendations that we asked officers is that the taxi licensing committees attend working group meetings with the taxi drivers so we can all have the same story at the same time, so we don't have the experience of an email coming in as late as this morning and we're all singing from the same song sheet at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Boyce?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, Chair. The cabinet member said that the Taxi Licensing Committee has approved this, but are we not being asked as a full council to approve it? I think that's what councillor Marshall was trying to get at, without like trying to paraphrase what he was saying. But are we not supposed to be now like approving this policy? Or is it just the Taxi Licensing Committee that like approves policy?
Chair, perhaps I'll take that because it's a legal question. The Licensing Committee is responsible for recommending the policy to council for approval, but in doing that, it indicates its approval with the policy. So if it wasn't prepared to recommend it, if it was unhappy with the policy, it would have gone back before it was presented to council. Councillor Fontaro?
Hello. I would just like it to be noted that I disagree with it as well. I don't think it's the right time to be changing things when the industry's just getting back on its feet.
Councillor Tinsley?
Thank you, Chair. I've listened to the debate, but I'm not clear that the issues were raised, that issues were not raised in the email this morning from the representative of the Taxi Association that were considered at the previous meeting. So I know I'd be much more content if the meeting did take place between the cabinet member, the representative of the Labour Group has been suggested before that this was taken forward. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Crute?
Thanks, Chair. Looks like this report has fallen apart in front of us. Can I suggest that we defer the report until the relevant cabinet members met with the Durham Taxi Drivers and Private Hire Association? I think that's the only way forward because there does seem to be quite a bit of discontent with the report as it stands.
Chair, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion without notice to defer a decision on this to allow for a meeting to take place with the trade, as has been suggested. It's been moved and seconded, so we will need to vote on it. Just give the team a couple of minutes to load the vote.
Chair, can I just ask which organisation are we expected to meet with? Because this email comes from the Durham Taxi Association. Is that across the county or is it just for Durham city taxis?
Councillor Marshall, we have not seen this email, so therefore, where does the gentleman come from? Is he a Durham taxi driver or an outside taxi driver?
Chair, it's from Durham Taxi and Private Hire Association. I know that they're well engaged with the local authority over a number of years, including when Labour were in running the council. So he's well known, represents the views of taxi drivers well around the county, and I just think we should defer it until a discussion can take place between this group and the cabinet member.
Okay, so the vote is ready. If you're voting in favour of deferring the item, it's one. Two, if you're voting against deferring the item, it's two. And three, if you wish to abstain. Votes open. The vote is now closed. Motion to defer the item. 492 against 24 abstain two. Motion has carried that the item be deferred. Item number 11, creation of a new head of corporate affairs post. Can I ask the chief executive to present the report, please? Councillor Kay, there was a motion without notice to defer the item, so that which has been carried, so the debate's closed.
Nothing to do with the debate. What it is, and you might think I'm being pedantic, is when you're in this chamber and you're addressing the chair of this council, if you're able to, please get your feet and stand.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. This report sets out for information the decision of the Chief Officer Appointments Committee to create a head of corporate affairs role at Head of Service two grade and to delete two existing head of service roles as part of agreed structural changes. Council will recall that the cross-party Chief Officer Appointment Committee, the COAC, has delegated authority for the creation of new posts over £100,000. The COAC met on the 16th of June to consider the proposals for the new post and the savings of £80,000 per annum associated with the changes to the head of service structure, which will be factored into forthcoming MTFP processes. Chair, the report sets out the information that was provided to the COAC and the rationale for the changes, and it confirmed that the new post holder, Steve Evans, currently employed by North Yorkshire County Council, will commence in post early in the new year. The recommendations for council to note the report are set out in paragraph 10, Chair. Thank you.
Does any member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to note the report, please? Item number 12, request to change the name of a parish council. Can I ask the head of Legal and Democratic Service to present this report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Hutton Henry Parish Council have submitted a request to the County Council to change its name to Hutton Henry and Station Town Parish Council to better reflect the area covered by the parish council. The provisions for changing the name of a parish council are contained within section 75 of the Local Government Act 1972, and a change of name doesn't require a community governance review. The parish council first proposed a change of name back in 2019 and undertook a consultation in March 2020, the details of which are set out at paragraph 13 to the report. There was a low response to that consultation, and in light of the Covid-19 pandemic, the parish council decided that it would undertake a second consultation at the point at which the pandemic was under control. Accordingly, a second consultation was undertaken between the 30th of August and the 27th of September, and the outcomes of that are presented in a report prepared by the parish council attached to your report as appendix two. That consultation had a slightly better response, with 73 out of approximately 750 households responding. 57 respondents, or 78.1% of respondents, were supportive of the proposal, and 46 of the respondents actually live in Station Town, with 27 in Hutton Henry. A summary of the comments received are at paragraphs 18 and 19 of the report, but overall the responses provided within the consultation were in favour of the change. County councils for Blackhall are also supportive of the proposals. Whilst it falls to the County Council to approve the request for the change of name, there's no cost to the council in doing so. If approved, the details will need to be published on the parish council and county councils' website. Notification will need to be provided to the Secretary of State, the Director General of Ordnance Survey, the Registrar General and the Local Government Boundary Commission for England. If council approves the name change, it will come into effect to coincide with the updated publication of the electoral register on the 1st of February 2023. Chair, the recommendations are set out at paragraphs four and five of the report.
Can I have a mover?
Yeah, Chair.
Yeah, Chair. This report's been through the all-party constitution working group, and therefore I move the recommendations as detailed in the report.
Thank you, councillor Hupgood.
Thank you, Chair. The proposal for a name change for the parish council has been discussed greatly within the local communities over recent years. It's clear that the residents are passionate about a change in name for their parish council to a one that reflects both communities it represents. As a local member for the area, I therefore have great pleasure to be showing my support and seconding the recommendations in the report.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to agree the report? Item thirteen, motions on notice. There are two motions for considerations. The motions will be dealt with in the order in which they were received and detailed on the agenda. I will hand over to the monitoring officer to explain the procedure.
Thank you, Chair. The usual rules of debate apply. Movers of motions have five minutes to speak, and secounders and other speakers have three minutes. Members may only speak once on a motion, other than the mover, who has a three-minute right of reply. If an amendment is moved and seconded, the debate moves on to that amendment. Only one amendment may be moved at any one time, and no further amendments can be moved until the amendment under discussion has been dealt with. Each member can speak once on the amendment, except for the mover of the original motion. They have a right of reply before the amendment is put to the vote, but may not otherwise speak on it. If, following the vote, the amendment is carried, it becomes the substantive motion. If the amendment falls, the debate goes back to the original motion.
Councillor Robert Adcock Foster, can you move your motion, please?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. Councillor Adcock Foster, representing the Merton and Donnelly Daily Division. Faced with a life-changing decision, made not by choice but often an instinctive reaction out of love, a decision that can turn their lives upside down to provide a child with a loving, stable home and protecting them from a life in care, thousands of grandparents, aunts, uncles, brothers, sisters and family friends make enormous personal and financial sacrifices to support a child in crisis. When taking on kinship care and responsibility, there is often a sense of uncertainty. Whilst you experience all the emotions of becoming a new parent, you're also conscious of the fact that children are with you due to the difficult circumstances of a family member. However, there is no greater reward than giving a child in crisis the safe, secure and loving home they deserve. Kinship carers are a silent and unheard majority in the children's social care system, and they deserve a far greater recognition, respect and support than is currently available. It's wildly recognised that kinship care delivers better outcomes for children. Compared to those in local authority care, children in kinship care benefit from increased stability and are better able to maintain family relationships. It is all too common that kinship care and poverty go hand in hand. In England, the government has set a national minimum fostering allowance to help foster carers cover the cost of raising someone else's child, or in some cases, children. Yet they've not done the same for kinship carers, despite the fact they face the same costs and pressures. We all know the cost of raising children increases as they grow older, with shoes, clothes and food becoming more expensive. Yet any financial support offered to kinship carers is means-tested, discretionary and time-limited. We need a long-term plan where the children's care sector is not just better resourced, but is also better organised. I therefore welcome the independent review of children's social care, a review which is wide-ranging and calls for a radical reset of children's social care, starting by recognising that it is loving relationships that hold the solutions for children and families overcoming adversity. We are all corporate parents in this chamber, and we have a duty to ensure every child has the best possible start in life. Carers and the children they look after should not be left financially disadvantaged. Instead, they should receive a fair allowance to help cover the costs of raising the children who would otherwise enter an expensive and often sometimes ineffective local authority care system. The care system as it stands is broken. This is the perfect opportunity to put that right. I call on members here to support this motion and to recognise the vital role played by kinship carers in offering care to children when they're most needed. Thank you.
Could I have a second, please?
Councillor Louise Bennet, Pete Lee, West Division. I second the motion brought by councillor Adcock Foster. We've all heard the saying that it takes a village to raise a child. Let's expand that to it takes a county to raise our children. We have the opportunity here to do the right thing by some pretty vulnerable children in County Durham. If we support this motion, we could make a huge difference to hundreds of young lives, enabling them to stay within the loving structure of their own families. This means staying connected to cousins, aunts, uncles, grandparents and other family members. We have already heard that children who stay in the family circle do better generally. Let us help to ensure this happens more often in County Durham. Foster care can be unstable with lots of upheavals and changes in carers. This is virtually unheard of within kinship families, enabling the children to make strong family connections and thrive. I know of two families in my ward, two kinship carers, both single parents, who are providing stable, loving homes for the children in their care. Josephine has already brought up one child of a relative to the age of twenty-three. He now works and lives independently. He is a kinship care success story. Josephine now has a guardianship of twin boys aged eight. She is getting older, but is giving these children the best care in life, with stability rather than disruptive foster care with strangers. As Josephine told me, the boys need to know, they need to be in contact with their extended family members, they need to know who they belong to. And there's Christina, a kinship carer for her four grandchildren, aged from thirteen to nine. Christina was in receipt of the two-year financial support kinship package, but that ceased some time ago. Christina is now near to the end of her savings. She is facing hardship as she continues to raise the boys into adulthood. Neither woman receives the same financial support as foster carers. It is nowhere near. Yet the outcomes for kinship care children are far better and financially benefits local authorities across the county. Please support this motion, the cause upon the government to recognise the importance of kinship care. Let's provide the right financial support for our kinship carers and the children they love and care for. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gunn?
Thank you, Chair. The independent review of children's social care is very clear. It says, and I quote, that dysfunction of the current system means that many relatives are forced to become foster carers in order for them to receive financial support to look after their kin. This is not what they wish to do, but what they are forced to do. Now, we know that what we're asking will come at a cost. Providing the right care should not be based on cost or profit. And I quote from the report again, Chair, which says, when finding a home for a child in care, our obsession must be putting relationships around them that are loving and lasting. And again, from the report, not from me, from the report, the government should uptake the funding formula for children's social care to better direct resources where they are needed. Now, which of us could not agree with that in this chamber? I fully support this motion. Thank you.
Councillor Henderson, please.
Thank you, Chair. Can I thank councillor Adcock Foster for his question and to bring this to our attention today? I welcome the publication of the independent review of children in social care and look forward to working with the government on the next steps. The government response to recommendations from the review is expected to be published later this year, for all the years slowly going by. And we hope this will lead to a much-needed change, addressing some of the challenges in the system. The report was a welcome emphasis on family support and the importance of relationships, which we feel builds on our own work in the county in recent years. We also support the review's conclusion, the significant additional investment of around £2.6 billion is required to rebalance the system away from the crisis intervention to helping families at an early stage. As a council, we recognise the importance of kinship and their ability to prove safe care for a child within their family network. This allows children to retain all the positive influences of their family, as well as being protected from harm. In the county, we have expanded our work, building strong relationships with family networks to support children to stay with extended family rather than enter the care system. This work was highlighted as good practice in our office and inspection. We believe that kinship carers can have a critical role in the lifelong care of children who need it, to enable that we have developed strong support services to work alongside the carers as a child develops and their needs change. This includes access to universal support, which has welfare advice as well as special services like full circle and supporting solutions. I welcome the recommendation of the independent care review and look forward to its implementation. However, it does need to be stressed to the government that it is important that any new burden arising from the change made by the review are recognised with sufficient funding. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the motion before I invite councillor Adcock Foster to give his right to reply? Councillor Simmons?
As a member of the fostering panel that decide on whether a child has kinship care or not, we always work for the best interests of the child or children involved. Some children are much better within their kinship care, but some children are not, and we spend hours discussing what is the right place to put all of our children who need any form of fostering care. So it's a very long thought-out discussion as to where children are placed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sutton Lloyd?
As someone who was a young baby benefited from this kind of loving care, I will certainly be supporting this motion.
Councillor Howie?
Thank you, Chair. As somebody who's written to the council before I was a councillor on this situation, I really, really heavily support this, so I will be supporting this motion.
There's no one else registered to speak? Councillor Adcock Foster, would you like a right to reply? Right, then we'll go at the vote. Thank you very much. Can it be agreed without a vote? Thank you. Thank you very much. Agreed. Councillor Angela Thirties, can you move your motion, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'll try and keep my voice going all the way through, but I might have to take a drink halfway, so I'm just going to start off with a quote first. There can be no keen revelation of a society's soul than the way it treats its children. And those are words spoken by Nelson Mandela. What I just want to quote on is, oh, poverty is a terrible thing, and child poverty is probably the most pernicious of all, and it's all too often an effect that lasts for a lifetime. And we all know in this chamber that the North East has the highest rate of child poverty in the country now, at thirty-eight percent. A little while ago, child poverty was due to have ended in the UK by two thousand and twenty, but unfortunately, we got a new government who threw out the action plan that had reduced child poverty by nearly eight percent and introduced a welfare reform bill, which did plunge thousands of families into hardship through austerity measures, increasing child poverty by thirteen percent. And along with that, they removed the dignity and heightened stigma for people and the eligibility criteria for accessing free school meals, and notwithstanding, Covid also exacerbated this effect as well. Eligibility for free school meals is very complicated and often dependent on circumstances, earnings, benefits and postcode now. The Scottish government has put in place legislation that, to a large extent, retains the binding targets for child poverty reduction that were removed in England in two thousand and sixteen, along with an ambitious programme of new investment and policies, which include free school meals for all primary school children, with Wales following suit. This government commissioned the National Food Strategy, and in two thousand and twenty, Part One was published with some firm recommendations, one of which was to extend a free school meal offer to support the country through Covid and prepare for Brexit transition. In fact, this council almost unanimously fully supported the right to food motion that was presented here at that time. The ambition of introducing universal free school meals for all primary pupils would obviously get rid of all the issues around eligibility and cliff edges and work disincentives and enrollment stroke bureaucracy this creates, bureaucracy, God, this creates for schools and council and also issues around stigma. And indeed, this is what is now in the process of being rolled out for the primary pupils in Scotland and Wales, with the pupils in England being left behind. It's a simple motion that I'm presenting today, but it is also one of huge importance. There is talk about extending the school day to keep children warm, so is it not right to also lobby to keep our young children fed too? With costs of food and fuel both rising sharply and amidst rising levels of food insecurity, the government need to find innovative solutions to support hard-working families with children. Offering all primary-age children a free lunch in school would be overwhelmingly popular with the public, our communities and our families. In case stage one, approximately sixteen thousand, we have, sorry, I'll start that one again, in case stage one in County Durham, we have approximately sixteen thousand children, with only five thousand and five actually eligible for free school meals. However, the universal offer covers that whole sixteen thousand cohort of children. These are from spring figures, so they could be slightly higher. In case stage two, which is junior school, they have approximately twenty-three thousand children, and only seven thousand eight hundred and thirteen children are eligible for free school meals. This motion would ask, by writing to government, that this motion would give an additional fifteen thousand children a hot new a hot nutritious balanced meal. At least one a day, and it would go a long way to support our County Durham families.
One minute.
Thank you, Chair. We're all mums, dads, grandparents, aunties, uncles, and we can take action to fight for our future generations of children. If we truly can measure a society by the way it treats its community and children, then I ask that we all show our hands today in this chamber today and vote to support the motion which is shown on the screen. Thank you, Chair.
Seconded, councillor Goon?
Thank you, Chair. I think councillor Thirties has covered most of the issues that are the crucial ones, but so I'll be fairly brief. As councillor Thirties stated, the Scottish government has led the way and Wales is committed to following, and probably earlier than planned, I think. But given that the poverty position in Wales is similar to that of County Durham, and they too have their poorest children who are starving. I have no apologies to using that, it's emotive if you like, language, starving children, because I'm absolutely certain that that is the situation that these children are in, these families are in. And I make no apologies either for repeating the same information that we already know. We already know across this chamber that children cannot learn if they are starving. They cannot learn if they are feeling the hunger pains in their tummies. They cannot learn. And only families earning under £7,400 a year qualify for free school meals. So we must remove the barriers to free school meals and the stigma of free school meals by making it universal. We all know we're looking at the highest level of inflation in 40 years. Families are living in poverty and they are at breaking point. And they're being joined by those families who are in decent paying jobs. So I'm saying to you, to you across, everyone across the chamber, a hot nutritious meal for primary children at lunchtime is not too much to ask for, is it? Please support this motion. I second the motion, Chair. Thank you.
Councillor Mark Wilks, please.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Mark Wilks, Framilgate and Newton Hall. By most calculations, we live in the fifth or sixth biggest economy on this planet. And if places like Finland, Sweden, Estonia, India, with a GDP of $2,500 a year, can afford to provide a free school meal, then to me, it's illogical for anyone to suggest that this country can't afford to do it as well. I'd like to thank the councillor for bringing this motion and I fully support it.
Councillor Alan Shield?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Alan Shield and morning members representing the Leadgate and Melonby Division and also the portfolio holder for equality and inclusion. Can I also thank councillor Thirties for bringing this motion? Through the work led by our Poverty Action Steering Group and the Poverty Child Poverty Working Group, as well as our wider partnership network, we are having ongoing extensive discussions in relation to free school meal takeover to ensure that wherever possible, the takeover is maximised. I understand that similar discussions have taken place at overview and scrutiny meetings, and I know that this is something that all our primary schools promote. I'm aware that the infant class free school meal funding is currently supporting over 13,000 children across County Durham to access a school meal. We should all be concerned over the takeover of a free school meal, which has increased slowly in recent years, but is still only 84%, meaning of 60% of pupils between reception and year two choose an alternative by bringing a packed lunch. Thankfully, school meals have changed a lot since I was at school. They cater for a much wider choice and provide a very balanced and healthy option. The latest data shows that there are some 22,873 children in years three, four, five or six attending a junior, primary or special school currently, with just under 8,000 or equivalent to 35% of these children being eligible for free meals, meaning almost 15,000 or 65% are not eligible. Across all maintained primary phase schools, covering 153 schools, including infants, juniors, mainstream primaries and two special primaries, free school meal takeover is steadily rising, but the rate is still a disappointing 78%. We have been and are having ongoing discussions with our partners, including our school leavers, other local authorities and with the North East Child Poverty Commission, who have backed the ambition of introducing universal free school meals for primary pupils as part of their No Child Left Behind campaign. We fully endorse this campaign and appreciate that it would cut through the issues around eligibility, the administration around enrollment and the ongoing issues around the associate stigma of claiming free school meals. With that overarching aim, the North East Child Poverty Commission have sought to lobby central government to change the eligibility entitlement threshold as it currently stands, so that it covers all pupils where households are in receipt of universal credit or any legacy benefits alongside their longstanding aspirations that free school meal entitlement be a universal offer. This would be the simplest and most effective way of ensuring the support reaches all children and the young children affected by food insecurity. This could be reinforced by a system of auto-enrollment with an opt-out clause using the data already held on eligibility. I also know that such approach is backed by the local government association. More locally, much work has been done to identify what barriers exist in relation to the existing scheme, so that those challenges can be addressed and takeover can be increased, that everyone who is entitled to it receives it. Following the recently held North East Child Poverty Commission Conference here at County Hall, Durham, I've taken the opportunity to write to the Secretary of State for Education.
It's time.
I'd just finish off, Chair, if you don't mind. If I'm reminded just to finish this last sentence off, that we do endorse that all primary school children have the opportunity for free school meal entitlement and that as a minimum, households in receipt of universal credit or legacy benefits are entitled that free school meals. I've also asked the government to look at auto-enrollment for healthy start vouchers. With that, Chair, I endorse what councillor Thirties found in her motion and I ask council to fully agree with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Malloy?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Malloy, Spandau Division. I've been rereading over this motion and I understand the sentiments behind councillor Thirties bringing this here. However, the problem I have with this is it's for all our primary school children. I'm of an opinion that if there's families from very affluent backgrounds, if they can pay, they should pay, you know? And I do believe that it's not right that low income families, and that low income families will increase under the current climate, should have to pay through taxation for affluent families' meals. I don't think that's right. That's going to make them even more less affluent, you know? So as this motion is written, unfortunately, I can't support this motion because I don't believe that poorer families should pay for richer families' children to have a free school meal through taxation. Thank you.
Councillor Elmer, please.
Thank you, Chair. The point I'm going to make, I guess, I think answered that actually, but I hadn't sort of prepared it in that way. I think the point here is that the current approach to targeting that we have doesn't work. It doesn't actually reach everybody in the way that it should. So I think the only solution to ensure that we address this serious problem is to roll out that opportunity to all children. I think it's particularly relevant at this point that the debate in this has almost moved on. Just a few years ago, we were talking about nutritional balance in meals, and then now we're talking about whether people have food at all. So I absolutely support this motion and I recommend that others do as well.
Councillor Boyce?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I support this motion. I'm totally against what councillor Malloy just said because it's the age old problem of means testing stigma of those kids who are getting free school meals. And as councillor Wilkes said, with the fifth biggest economy in the world, surely we can afford to give our kids a nutritious meal. Surely we can. I feel lucky that, I guess I was from a lower middle class background, and nutrition was important in my household and I was always given a meal at school dinners and I was always given a meal at home. And I haven't suffered from ill health. And I think there is a correlation between the public health report we got earlier and the issue that we're discussing now. Kids when they were younger, if they haven't had the nutrition and they haven't had the upbringing that I feel lucky that I had, well, they're going to suffer later on in life. And I think if we do research, I think those people who are living four and a half years in poor health compared to other people in the country, I think a lot of it will be down to early years, how they were brought up, the nutrition they had. So I can't agree that this should be means tested. I think we can afford as a country to give all our kids a nutritious meal on a Monday. You know, I represent over age and we do have kids coming to school who are hungry. We've had to set up a breakfast club, not means tested. All kids can come and all kids can like sort of have a breakfast before they go to, before they go to learn. Because a lot of these kids were coming in hungry and we didn't want to stigmatise them. We didn't want to say, you haven't had any breakfast, so you can come to breakfast club. We just made it so everybody could. And I don't think the more affluent people are taking advantage of that scheme. And I don't think the poorer people are saying, well, that's terrible that more affluent kids are joining this breakfast club. Everybody just gets on with it and means our kids are going to school and learning without being hungry. So I totally support the motion and I'm, sorry, I'm totally against what councillor Malloy just said.
Thank you. Councillor Shirley Quinn?
Thank you, Chair. Shirley Quinn from Shildon and Dean Valley. I just want to point out that my daughter works, she works full time and her husband works part time. They haven't been allowed, they're not entitled to any benefits whatsoever. And regularly, and I mean regularly, at least once in every month, I have to pay their shopping bill because they can't afford it. These are working people, these are people that are, you know, successful in their own right and I'm really proud of them. But the pressures on financial burden on them is astronomical. And the school meals situation, they've got a three year old child now that goes to nursery and he pays for his school meals. And it's another additional pressure on people. And I fully support this and I would like to see free school meals reinstated right across this country. And I do think it's a matter of urgency. Thank you.
We have reached time limit for motions on notice. In accordance with the constitution, we will now put the matter to the vote. Can I invite councillor Thirties to give their right of reply, please?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, just to say that I'm really encouraged by what everybody said in the chamber today. This is the right thing to do. These are our children, these are our generation. And I just want to say thanks for everybody who supports this motion.
Okay, because we had some dissent, we will need to go to the vote on this. So it's one in favour of the motion, two against, three to abstain. The buzzer will sound when the votes open.
Vote closed now. Well, I can take it from you clapping. You've already read it. 409 against two, abstain eight. Okay, thank you. Motion is carried. Item 14, questions from members. No questions have been received for today's meeting. That concludes today's business. For the ordinary council meeting, the extraordinary meeting will follow this meeting. I would like to thank everyone for taking part and to those members of the public and the media who have watched the meeting. We're going to have a 10 minute comfort break. Could you please make sure you're all back? Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, once again. Welcome to the extraordinary meeting of the county council, a meeting taking place on Wednesday, the 7th of December, 2022. This meeting has been broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with the formal business, could I ask everyone in the chamber to ensure their mobile phones are switched off or made silent, please? Before we move to the business on the agenda, I would like to remind you of the housekeeping rules for the meeting. Any requests to speak must be made using your voting handset. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and switch on the closest microphone to you. Members should be respectful to each other during the meeting and observe the members' code of conduct. There should be no shouting.
I'd advise members that at this stage, the terms of any devolution deal are the subjects of negotiation. They are confidential until such time as there is a deal in principle, and it is announced by the Secretary of State. At that point, details will be published, and the statutory process for consideration of the proposed deal will commence. That will include consideration of the options by Cabinet, as well as a public consultation on the proposed scheme, before a final decision is taken as to whether to enter the deal. This approach is consistent with that taken in relation to other recently announced devolution deals elsewhere in the country. Therefore, for the purposes of the debate today, I advise members to concentrate on the principles of devolution, rather than specific proposals. In the event that specific proposals are raised, it may be necessary to pass a resolution to exclude the press and public, which I'm sure members would wish to avoid. Thank you.
councillor Marshall, can you move your-
Chair, sorry, can I just move a motion without notice, that we extend the time to sixty minutes, to make sure that we have enough time to debate this and everyone has time to speak? That's doubling the allowed time for motions, so I hope everyone can support that.
Could I have a second, please?
Second that, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Can we agree that? Councillor Marshall, can you move your motion, please?
Thanks, Chair. Chair, like so many of us in this chamber, I have so many questions for the leaders of this council, but they all start with the word why. Why have we had to force this debate in here today? Why have we had to drag devolution discussions from secret meeting rooms into the light of the council chamber in Durham? Why are the council's so-called leaders tying themselves in knots, avoiding the views of others on something so vital to our county's future? And why are the views of the people who selected us as their community's representatives being suppressed? We all serve County Durham. Every vote is a token of trust given to us temporarily to make decisions and improve the lives of the communities and the county we all live in. A county-wide devolution deal is the way we deliver that. It provides us with more powers, more investment, more ability to set our own priorities, and to become masters of our own destiny. So again, I ask why? Why does this council's leadership seek to pass up this once-in-a-generation opportunity? An opportunity that the government never offered to the previous Labour administration, but was welcomed with open arms from the council's leadership when the levelling-up white paper was announced by Michael Gove. For months, we've all been kept in the dark by councillors Hopgood and Bell, as they've held secret discussions, trying to undo a year of inaction and ineptitude, a year in which other leaders agreed spending priorities, divvied up devolution investments between themselves. A year wasted by an incompetent Tory-Lib Dem coalition here, only for its leaders to suddenly cast aside the opportunity for County Durham to stand on its own and throw us in with the other authorities, surrendering hundreds of millions of transport cash that's already been allocated. Relationships with the wider region are vitally important, north, south, and west, but why would any of us back a deal that doesn't even offer equality with those we are entering into it with? It's like the worse, worse than the worst prenuptial agreement ever signed, Chair. The deal currently on the table has not got a single penny legally committed to County Durham. Unfortunately, Chair, the same cannot be said for other parts of the North East. Having had several meetings over the past twelve months on devolution with members of the public, officers, stakeholders, and the leader of this council, it's clear to me that the leadership of this council is absolutely out of touch with our communities and completely out of its depth with these negotiations. Councillor Hopgood and councillor Bell should come clean on what they want us signed up to. Come clean with the councillors and come clean with our communities. That word again, why? Why won't you take the shackles off County Durham, grasp a once-in-a-generation chance to deliver a devolution deal that puts our county first, allowing decisions that affect our communities being made right here in our own county? The county council must reject a deal that makes us a small part of a mega-authority overseen by a Tyneside-based mayor chair. If we're going to have a mayor, it shouldn't be, it should be one democratically elected by our people, right here in our county, based in County Durham, from our county, and one that understands our diverse communities and can stand up for the people, the people of Barnet Castle, Concert, Willock and Crook, Ferry Hill, Easant Sealy, Pete Lee, Spennymo Newt, Neoclyffe, Bishop Walkland, Chesley Street, Shildon, and every other town and village across this county, as well as standing up for Durham city. How can these smaller communities, the backbone of our county, compete with investment into major cities around the region without a county deal? It's virtually impossible, I would suggest. I'm urging you all to put politics aside and to put County Durham first. Accept the dermoney deal offered by ministers, a deal that Lib Dems and Tories have so far failed to act on. Half a million people in our county, and most don't have a clue what deal has been done in their name. We've got two UNESCO World Heritage Sites, a growing cultural offer attracting twenty million visitors worth over one billion to our economy. We're the largest part of the North East, we have the largest economy, and we also have some of the biggest ambitions, and we have the chance to take power out of London and bring it right here to County Durham. A chance to put County Durham first. Look at what's happening in Cornwall. Their county deal has secured them three hundred and sixty million. Why shouldn't Durham have the same? The government wanted to do it. Cornwall got a county deal, no mayor, millions in extra cash. Why haven't the leadership here done the same for County Durham? Why pass up the opportunity of securing more, to invest in our villages, help our larger towns, compete with Newcastle, Gateshead, Sunderland, making everyone across the region raise their game? Amanda and Richard's deal makes absolutely no sense at all for County Durham. Let's not sell our residents down the river when we have the chance to improve the air environment, prospects, infrastructure, and quality of life. Why? Today, let's agree to put County Durham first and back a deal that gives us more say, more investment, and more power, and that's a county deal. Chair, I'd just like a form-
Order, please. Right, councillor Marshall, could you wind it up now, please?
Yeah, of course I can. Let's agree to put County Durham first and back a deal that gives us more say, more investment, more power, right here in County Durham, a county deal, and I formally propose the motion that's been outlined on the screen. Thanks, Chair.
Chair, just on a point of order, for information purposes, are we being asked to agree the principle for public consultation on devolution? Are we being asked to make a decision on devolution?
No, you're not being asked to make a decision in respect of devolution. The recommendation, the motion is recommending that council recommends to Cabinet that it chooses a county deal. It's as if you're looking to make a recommendation to Cabinet. It will be Cabinet that determines the principles in relation to devolution.
But there will be consultation with the public?
Yes.
Further consultation? So nobody's being suppressed?
Could I have a second, please?
Thank you, Chairman. In second in the motion, I echo the comments made by councillor Marshall. There are so many questions unanswered, not least for the members in this room today. Every one of us elected by the people of County Durham, to stand up for the people of County Durham. On behalf of the people we represent, we need to know how hard the coalition fought for a county-wide deal, a deal that would put Durham first on every metric, and a deal that would have ensured that every single penny devolved to Durham would stay in Durham. Because we know that nothing, not a henny, in a metropolitan deal is earmarked specifically for County Durham. And after so long leading everyone to believe they supported the county deal for Durham, why at the eleventh hour did they suddenly and unilaterally switch tack and decide to throw our lot in with a metropolitan devolution deal designed and funded specifically to serve the urban towns and cities of Tyne and Wear? County Durham is a unique and rural county that needs and deserves its own bespoke devolution deal. Councillor Marshall referred to a recently announced county-wide deal for Cornwall, a deal that will secure three hundred and sixty million pounds over thirty years, crucially including funding for transport bespoke to a rural county, and with every last penny going to the people and communities of that county. So if a county-wide deal is good enough for the people of Cornwall, why does the coalition here think it's not worth fighting for for the people of County Durham? If the coalition commits us to a metropolitan deal with the Conurbations to the north, there's no doubt that where it is a rural county will be left behind. How will Spennymoia compete with Sunderland? How will Newt Neoclyffe be heard over the voices of Newcastle? What interest will a metropolitan mayor based on Tyneside, having the people in the communities of Pete Lee, Chesley Street, and the other settlements across our county? The uncomfortable truth, Chair, is that our people will be left with the scraps from the table of an LA six already up to speed and several years ahead of Durham in terms of transport funding alone, and that isn't good enough, Chair. I wish the authorities of the current LA six well, and I genuinely hope they prosper, but not at the expense of the people here in County Durham. The coalition needs to summon the strength and the courage to stand up for our county and secure a county-wide deal for County Durham. After all, it's the only deal, the only one mind, that guarantees that every last penny of funding comes to County Durham. So if the coalition can't bring themselves to do that, they should do the decent thing, stand aside, and hand the negotiations over to somebody who can. I urge the coalition to recognise the unique value of County Durham and its people, and put us first by securing a county-wide deal for Durham. I second the motion, Chair, and I urge every member of the council to support this motion. Thank you.
councillor Hopgood?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'd like to move an amendment to the motion, please, and I'd like to move an amendment that reads, this council recommends Durham County Council's cabinet puts County Durham first by securing a devolution deal that is best for County Durham, residents and businesses with government. So we've heard quite a lot of rhetoric there, as expected. Councillor Marshall, I would just say, don't judge everyone by how you operate your group. The joint administration have been kept informed with what's been happening. You've contradicted yourself by saying that you haven't spoke to us, but then you said we did meet. Well, it can't be both. I can't actually speak to you and then not meet you, so it's either one or the other. We're a small part of an LA seven. The population of County Durham is quarter of what the LA seven makes up. There is no guarantees for any spending detailed to any local authority within there, within any of the deals, but there is a process to follow, and that's a process that is set out by the Secretary of State and set out by government, and that will be followed and presented to Cabinet in due course. So I will have other things to say when we come to the substantive motion or where we get to. But in terms of what's best for County Durham, you moving a motion that only deals with one option isn't what's best for County Durham, and I think the motion as it's amended speaks better for the people in here, for the people we represent, that we go to get the best deal for County Durham, whatever that looks like.
Point of order, Chair. The amendment as put forward by councillor Hopgood completely negates the motion as previously forwarded by the Labour Group. The previous motion made a specific statement as to what we were seeking as a council. This does not remove that and negates the motion. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, I disagree that the amendment negates the motion. For an amendment to be valid, it needs to be relevant to the motion. It is. It relates to the council's options in respect of devolution. It proposes an alternative course of action, which is acceptable. It leaves open the option of a county deal being recommended to Cabinet, and isn't the same as just voting against your recommendation, and therefore it's a valid amendment.
Could I have a second, please?
Thank you, Chair. I second the amendment and reserve my right to speak towards the end, and I call on a named vote at the end of the debate.
councillor Kevin Shaw in John Howie, you requested to speak before the amendment was moved. Do you wish to speak on the amendment?
No.
No? Oh. Councillor Adam?
Thank you, Chair. I wish to speak against the amendment. Thank you, Chair. Councillor Eddie Adam representing Acliff West. Chair, this amendment almost negates the main motion by offering us what is already on the table, a bad deal for County Durham. They claim there is no alternative. It claims the best deal possible. How do we know? We haven't scrutinised the deal or any other alternative. The current government has failed County Durham through austerity and so-called levelling up, and it is failing us through a devolution deal that could see us as a second class to the other LA six. In my view, Chair, this local authority's leadership are levelling down County Durham if it continues to pursue a LA seven deal, handing power to an external mayor and an LA six that will not have an interest in the south of our region. Let's analyse the current proposal, Chair. A single solution with no comparisons for us to judge. A key decision by a leader, deputy leader, senior officers, and possibly other Cabinet members, of which we're unaware of, but not this council. A minimum deal on actual funding coming to County Durham. Little confidence in the fair distribution of that funding coming to County Durham. A deal that could be in detriment to County Durham, but not the LA six. Entering a thirty-year deal without scrutiny by this council, unheard of, colleagues. Chair, I put it to members here today, have you, as members, scrutinised this deal?
One minute.
Are you confident that your community wants an LA seven deal? Is this deal right for the whole of County Durham? In my view, Chair and members, I think not. Therefore, I urge you to vote against this amendment.
Thank you. councillor Richard Bell?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Marshall raised a number of rhetorical why questions. I have only one why question in response, and that is, why did the Labour Group only get briefed on the terms of what's on the table on Monday of this week, despite it being an offer for many months previously? That's a good question for councillor Marshall to answer. The leadership of this council has been- handing power to an external mayor and an LA6 that will not have an interest in the south of our region. Let's analyse the current proposal, Chair. A single solution with no comparisons for us to judge. A key decision by a leader, deputy leader, senior officers and possibly other cabinet members, of which we're unaware of, but not this council. A minimum deal on actual funding coming to County Durham. Little confidence in the fair distribution of that funding coming to County Durham. A deal that could be in detriment to County Durham, but not the LA6. Entering a 30-year deal without scrutiny by this council, unheard of, colleagues. Chair, I put it to members here today, have you, as members, scrutinised this deal? Are you confident that your community wants an LA7 deal? Is this deal right for the whole of County Durham? In my view, Chair and members, I think not. Therefore, I urge you to vote against this amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Richard Bell?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Marshall raised a number of rhetorical why questions. I have only one why question in response. And that is, why did the Labour Group only get briefed on the terms of what's on the table on Monday of this week, despite it being an offer for many months previously? That's a good question for councillor Marshall to answer. The leadership of this council has been open and transparent throughout. Members of the joint administration have had two or three briefings. And it is the nature of these things that there are long periods of inactivity followed by short bursts of intense activity. As you'd expect doing the job I do, I've taken a keen interest in the finances behind what's an offer. And while I cannot go into numbers today, as has been said, these will be provided in the Cabinet report in due course, I can confirm that the LA7 deal brings significantly more money than a county deal would have done. My aim has always been to get as much money out of government as possible because responsibilities without resources benefit nobody. I have talked to three Secretaries of State over the past year, Michael Gove, Greg Clark and Simon Clark. All have been very clear that the most money follows an LA7 deal and that they wanted an LA7 deal. After I spoke with Simon Clark, he followed up with a letter to me on the 7th of October. And I quote from the last paragraph, "I would also reiterate my view that Durham joining the wider North East deal is likely to result in a more generous, underlined settlement than if Durham secured their own mayoral counterdeal. I trust that this is clear." I'll repeat that, though councillor Marshall has seen this letter in a private briefing along with councillor Shaw. "I would also reiterate my view that Durham joining the wider North East deal is likely to result in a more generous, underlined settlement than if Durham secured their own mayoral counterdeal. I trust that this is clear." The government has wanted this deal all along. It has thrown money at it and the LA7 deal is now resolved better than anyone could have expected, a fact our colleagues in the LA6 recognised. That letter also asked for our opinion on the LA7 deal by the end of that week and that the opinion Cabinet gave was that it was minded in principle to agree. And as things stand, the LA7 deal is the best deal on the table and is what Cabinet will be supporting. But just as in a planning meeting, it is not right at this stage to predetermine our position, hence the LA7 deal is not expressly referenced in the amendment. I can confirm that the LA7 deal brings significantly more money than a county deal would have done and I would commend all councillors to look at the facts and support the amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Gunn?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to go back to this amendment here in terms of it being valid and of course accept your judgement on this. We have to do that. I don't believe actually that it is valid in respect of it not altering completely what we are recommending here because we are well aware of the fact that the leader and the deputy leader have already indicated a preferred option for Durham County Council. We are aware of that fact and it's out there and we know that that preferred option was actually put to the leaders of the other councils prior to it coming to the leader of the Labour Group. So there may well have been talks and invitations to meetings, but they were actually after you'd gone to the leaders of the other local authorities to let them know what your preferred option was. That, I think, is absolutely deplorable. And also, I understand that the leader and the deputy leader focused on talks with ministers and civil servants earlier on a county deal. On a county deal, that was your focus. And my understanding is that actually the reason why this authority and the leader and deputy leader came late to the table around this devolution deal for the wider North East is because then they found out that if there's a county deal, you have to have a mayor for Durham County. And you didn't want a mayor, but you're quite prepared to have a mayor for the wider region.
One minute.
Now, how, Chair, how can it be right that it's a good deal for County Durham to actually have a mayor who may be in Newcastle, who may be in Northumberland, making decisions for County Durham on issues to do with a whole range of funding and where that funding goes? That is not a good deal. And I totally oppose this amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Jake Milli, councillor Milli?
Thanks, Chair. I'm speaking against the amendment. I'm not sure how you can say what deal is best for the residents of County Durham when you haven't consulted with them. We've just heard that you don't consult with them until after it's gone to the Secretary of State. That's far too late. You know, you've made a decision on a preference that is your decision, that you feel is right. We're not here to make decisions on what we want and what we feel are right. We're here to make our residents' lives better. And the only way you do that is you listen to them. And to quote councillor Hopgood, "We're a small part of an LA7." Exactly. We can be a small part of an LA7 or we can be the only part of a countywide deal. And in response to councillor Bell, you can't put a price on local knowledge and local experience. And the only deal that brings that is a county deal.
Chair, just by way of clarification, there is a statutory process to be followed to determine whether or not we enter into this. The Secretary of State will announce a deal in principle, as he has done with Cornwall and other areas of the country. That's what commences the statutory process and a report into Cabinet. And there will be a public consultation before a final decision is taken by the relevant authorities, if appropriate, or just this authority, if appropriate, and then finally the Secretary of State. So there is a process. So just to clarify that.
Can I just ask a question, Chair? Have residents been consulted with to date?
No, because the statutory process hasn't started yet.
Thank you.
Councillor Tinsley?
Thank you, Chair. The amendment, a devolution deal that is in the best interest for County Durham. Who decides that? And it isn't the people of County Durham who should decide what is in their best interest. I don't know who it is. And the whole problem with this process from the very beginning, as was mentioned earlier in councillor Marshall's, when he spoke, was this is all about deals being done behind closed doors. Now, our monitoring officer has said there, there is a statutory process. I don't challenge that. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we can't go beyond that and consult with the people of County Durham. We can do that now. This is one of the only opportunities where this issue is getting aired in debate. It's not getting aired out there. Why? Because there are certain members of the leadership do not want it to be aired in public. Now, what it is, is that I stand here and I support a county deal. The reason for that is, I believe, I have confidence in the people of County Durham. Let's just take you for an example. Transport funding, infrastructure funding. There's a meeting in Manchester. They're talking about how the money is going to be thrown out, given here and there. If we have a mayor in County Durham who's shouting for County Durham, he can go and fight the corner for County Durham. But if it's a mayor based in Newcastle, representing an area from Berwick down to Barnard Castle, he's fighting for that bigger area. And we all know around issues with the metro and where the money's going to go. There's no guarantee, no ring fencing whatsoever for money in a region-wide deal for County Durham, and I'll be challenged on that. But a key thing here as well is that you have to sit back and think about who you represent. Because that's what this is about. There are many of you over there who are independents, you're a member of a political party, and I respect that. And you're independent in your area, you're independent in your ward. You understand the people that you represent.
One minute.
But what you can do as well is you can stand up and say Durham is independent. Durham has its say and Durham's interests are best represented by a directly elected mayor as part of a countywide deal in County Durham. It's not being thrown in with a tiny wee conurbation where we will get crumbs off the table. So what I would say to you and I would encourage you is to vote against this nonsense verbiage that is an amendment. Have a think about this and think what's in the best interest of County Durham and the residents you represent. I won't be voting for this. Thank you, Chair.
Could I please remind, before I ask for the next councillor, no shouting, please. Thank you. Councillor Wilkes?
No intention of shouting, Chair. Councillors, we know what's on the table. And that's why I'm livid with the Labour Group leadership for playing politics with our county's future and woefully misrepresenting the truth about devolution. There are two options. No, there are two. Let's be clear, there are two. Others have raised funding, but let's be clear and understand the political differences between these two things. Either we have a directly elected mayor just for County Durham, who would have complete control over how every single penny of this council's £1 billion budget is spent and complete control over who sits on Cabinet, or we have a regional figurehead with few powers who has categorically zero ability to spend or influence even one pence of our budget. A directly elected mayor of the LA7 would simply sit on a board with one vote with the seven council leaders and make decisions on how additional money provided to the region from government would be spent. No more powers than that. Any councillor who votes with councillor Marshall today is saying that they are happy for a single individual from a political party to control everything this council does. Someone who could be parachuted in from anywhere in the country. One individual should not be deciding on how every penny of children's services money is spent. One person should not be deciding on which families in this county get help and which don't. Just imagine somebody cutting something to divert cash to their own pet project, overruling 126 democratically elected councillors and moving us to monthly bin collections to pay for some vanity project, scrapping neighbourhood budgets or controlling all Section 106 money. These are plausible realities in a dictatorship. Replace them with something you or your community wants, needs or expects, and then remember, one person can take away everything you hold dear.
Point of order, Chair.
We have nearly finished. We should not accept that the public are, and the public are realising that they are being hoodwinked by certain individuals hell-bent on their own personal positions, doing damage to their own party and risking the loss of millions of pounds for this county. It's time to choose. Are you with County Durham or are you with the dictator?
Councillor Tinsley?
Point of order is that the monitoring officer and the instructions about how this debate was undertaken was very clear that only matters of principle can be discussed. The previous contribution there from the councillor was clear about specifics of a proposal that is not in the public domain, as we are aware of, and is such should be struck from the record, and she has to remove that. Thank you, Chair.
I think the councillor was explaining the distinction between a metro mayor and a directly elected leader, which is in the white paper, is in the public domain.
Councillor Hood?
Thank you, Chair. Let's hope we get through this nice and clearly without anybody heckling or shouting. Simply put, an LA7 deal is better for the people of County Durham. He has the facts. An LA7 deal brings more money and more opportunities for County Durham. A county deal does not. An LA7 deal gets...
I think councillor Bell has read from a letter with the Secretary of State that leads us to believe that the county deal would be less beneficial than an LA7 deal. That's a principle. The details of what was on the table in respect of those deals is specifics.
May I continue? Thank you, Chair. An LA7 deal means we become big enough for the government's trailblazer deal, meaning even more devolved powers, more funding and more opportunities. That is not available in a county-only deal. Never will be. We cannot be big enough. The opposition like to claim that County Durham is closed for business, as they say under this joint administration. Well, what this joint administration is proposing is an LA7 deal that brings the maximum economic impact with more jobs. An LA7 deal is the first choice for businesses. County Durham Labour propose a county-only deal, meaning a more modest economic impact, fewer jobs, and is not the business community choice. And finally, in terms of how this council will function in a devolved deal, an LA7 deal means there's no change to Durham County Council. This council will function the same as it does now. A county-only deal would mean a directly elected leader, one person, who then has full control over all council services and devolution. An LA7 deal would say Durham County Council continue to be a place of democracy and proportional representation and not become a dictatorship. The people of County Durham have already had that for 100 years. I'm sure they don't want it again. Councillor Crute says that there's been a unilateral switch by this administration.
Excuse me, no shouting.
So...
Order.
I'm sorry, I wasn't sure because I was told I had to stand in the last meeting from councillor Hovells. And I'm normally sat down so he can hear us better. I just want to make sure that I'm heard, that's all. Was councillor Hovell said it last time? Was councillor Hovell who brought it up last time? So...
Please, order.
I'll close with the following quotes. "Reaching a deal takes time, but leaders have all agreed to move forward to the next stage of negotiations and are all determined to reach an agreement that is good for the North East." They are not my words. They are the words of the then Chair of the North East Combined Authority, councillor Simon Hennig, in an official press release dated the 16th of October 2015. The statement from councillor Hennig continues with, "Leaders will continue to seek further consultation with the public and other stakeholders." That's exactly what the joint administration is proposing. If it was good enough for County Durham Labour then, why not now? And before anybody says, "Well, that was seven years ago and a lot's changed since then", I'll kindly refer the opposition to this. Here's the Labour Party's latest publication, "A New Britain Renewing Our Democracy and Rebuilding Our Economy". Within it is Recommendation 10, which states, "There should be an economic growth or prosperity plan for every town and city to contribute to our shared prosperity owned by councils, mayors, towns and cities working in partnership." It continues by saying, "Both local and regional partnerships are needed and that can take advantage of powers being pushed out from the centre, particularly on skills and transport." It also recommends regional partnerships to enable local leaders to group together using their joint powers and influence to deliver change of scale on issues such as clusters. It's page 83, if any of yous want to have a follow-up. I will not, I will be voting for the amendment.
Point of order, please.
Councillor Howie? Oh, sorry, sorry, yes.
I hope councillor Hood's enjoying that booklet, by the way. To attack two people in this council like that is absolutely disgusting and I hope that's going to be brought up.
Who did he attack? I think he read what was written.
Councillor Hood referenced two members on this side for what happened in the past and I don't find that on or his behaviour.
It's fact. It's fact. It's not attacking, it's fact. Councillor Howie?
Thank you, Chair. I myself thought that having a Durham deal was the best option at first. However, since looking into the options and the new boundary reviews on top as well, I have decided that joining the LA6 was the better option. Concert is now joining Blaydon to have an MP for both of them. But are we happy to let Blaydon have more in their area than in North County Durham? Do we want to be the little man stuck in between two massive influential areas of Teeside and the LA6? Who would want to invest in County Durham when faced with such progressive areas? If we join the LA6, we will have more money brought into the area for our residents, more opportunities and we will be more progressive and have more options. Do we want to be stuck in the past because the Labour Group leader wanted to have control of the county for his own vanity? Or do we want to be a progressive, forward-thinking area where everyone has a chance to look after County Durham like we are now, but with more money and investment for our area? I am all for progression and that's why I will not be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
I will be supporting the amendment. I will be, sorry. I will be. Sorry, I wrote this before the amendment, but I will be, yes, sorry. I will be supporting the amendment, just for the record. Councillor Scott? Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Chair. Labour seem intent on making this a silly internal squabble, and I really have no time for that. In the past year and a half, the joint administration has demonstrated unprecedented levels of ambition for this county, its businesses and its residents, and that's exactly what we're doing now. Working with businesses and their representative organisations as closely as I do, I'm in no doubt that they see the economic value in working together with regional colleagues, and that is the direction of travel that best meets our joint economic ambitions. As a county, we have worked with partners to develop our very first inclusive economic strategy. What that means is that we are ready. Ready to secure economic growth, ready to secure investment, ready to forget about underachievement of the past and to get this county moving, to close the gap, all of the things that we talked about in the previous meeting, the gaps in health, in poverty, in employment, all of the things that hold us back. That's what we have to have an eye to, not having a scrap in here. Working in partnership, we secured a position as one of the top four in the City of Culture Competition. No doubt that's helped influence government's recent decision to award the first regional tourism pilot to us here in the North East. 2.7 million across the LA7 geography to increase visitor numbers and value for the region. The strength of the Joint Transport Committee has enabled an impressive award of £163 million for bus service improvements. Again, another example of the power of partnership working across the LA7 geography. If we come to the LA7 deal, we come from a position of strength. A regional mayor will seek out the most investable schemes, and in County Durham, we are ready to take full advantage of that, securing opportunities for our businesses and our residents. I urge my colleagues to do the only sensible thing and support the amendment.[727.79][727.79](applause).
Councillor Sir?
Thank you, Chair. I can't shout, so that won't be happening. Can I just— I've just got a simple statement really here. It's a— sorry, councillor Bell, I'm just quoting—you've just said that this deal is better than a county deal. Well, for me, yes, I do sit on the other side of the chamber and I'm very proud to be Labour, but I haven't seen a county deal, so I don't know what's different from a county deal or an LA7 deal. So I don't know what was on the table for that, and I would have liked to have seen that, not be shouted at and dictated at about why we won't have our own budget, we won't have control of our own budget. I want to know what a county deal would have done for my residents. I represent thousands of residents, we all do, in here, so I'll be voting against this amendment because consultation is key, we've talked about it, and I accept 100% what Helen has told us about this. But surely we need to know what options are on the table in order for us to make an informed choice, not for decisions to be made in a back room and then just presented to us at the final hour. For me, I don't know that it is a better deal, this, because I haven't seen what a potential county deal can be for us. So for me, without that information, I will be voting against this amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor McKeen?
Thank you, Chair. For too long, this county has not received the levers it needs to level up and address the unique challenges it faces. The devolution agreement empowers local leaders here who know best the issues. I look forward to turbocharging levelling up, spreading opportunity and unleashing this great area's full economic potential. These aren't my words, council, these are the words of Tory MP for Bishop Auckland, Helena Davidson unveiling the Cornwall deal a few days ago. If it's good enough from her mouth for the people of Cornwall, then why isn't it being considered for her own constituents? Yeah, it might bring in more money, but as alluded to before, there's no earmarking it there for us. I wonder what discussions our elected leaders here have had with MPs from both parties across the county, how they fed into this debate. At the moment, we have two options, as councillor Wilkes alluded to, and we've heard about the statutory process, but because unlike a lot of other places, we have two options, I feel quite uncomfortable about not being able to discuss specifics because we are in a position as a county where I think that's necessary, where a greater level of transparency is necessary because there are two paths we could go down. I feel ever so slightly betrayed that we can't speak as openly as we otherwise would have been able to in this meeting today. We've heard earlier from councillor Hood that a trailblazer would mean more power, but also his cabinet colleague councillor Wilkes has said that mayors are good because it's less power, so I wonder where the consistency is on that. We've also heard about preserving democracy, but councillor Scott has described this whole debate as just a scrap. Actually, this is us coming together to talk about what the future should be. I would like to know today from councillor Hopgood, is she going to follow the democratic wish of the council regardless of the outcome?
Councillor Wood?
Thank you, Chair. I'd actually like to speak on a point of order regarding the amendment, and the reason for it being a point of order is whether or not it's in order for us to be discussing it as an amendment in the light of at the beginning of this meeting, there were no declarations of interest made when you specifically asked for them. The council's constitution does spend a lot of time looking at things that are classed as other relevant interests, and one of those under Part B— sorry, Section A, Part B—is to register anybody of which they are a member or in a position of general control or management to which you're appointed or nominated by the council. So really, my point of order is, we've heard five cabinet members, and this amendment was proposed and seconded by two cabinet members, trying to influence the council on a recommendation to the cabinet, which is a body that they were all appointed to. Thanks.
I don't think the cabinet members have another relevant interest to declare. Being a cabinet member isn't—for the purposes of discharging council business, isn't another relevant interest.
Yes, thank you, Chair. We've heard a lot of discussions this morning about democracy and not handing over power to a mayor of Teenside, but on a couple of points, who says that the mayor will not be from County Durham?[1050.33][1050.33](applause). Mainly, the mayoral combined authority as directly elected leader, and that operates with a cabinet. That's a cabinet that the mayor doesn't handpick, but one made up of the seven leaders of every authority. The Government White Paper, when introducing county deals, did not take into account or consideration the impact of such deals would have on unitary councils. Devolution was designed to devolve powers down from government to a more local level, not to move council operations up from local members to a single person with dictatorship powers. The people of County Durham do deserve the very best, so let's get this consultation underway as soon as—and get the voice of the people. Thank you.[1110.15][1110.15](applause).
Councillor Duffy, please.
Councillor Duffy, Pete Lee-West. For years and years, County Durham has sadly been at the wrong end of the National League table when it comes to poverty and deprivation. For years, many people have said that Westminster doesn't understand the North East and what we need here, that everything is too London-centric. So when the opportunity arises to move some of those powers and money that goes with them to the North East on a grand scale, Labour in County Durham are once again happy to take second best. We have seen their lack of ambition and their inability to look forward and outwards for years. For over five years now, we have seen the investment that has been given and delivered in the likes of Tees Valley and Greater Manchester, where larger mayoral combined authorities are in place, and County Durham Labour are happy that County Durham does not become part of one of these authorities and therefore lose out on the opportunity to bring to this county. All members have had the opportunity now to hear from officers and know the figures involved in both options. I've been to several meetings. If we want what is best for the residents of Durham and business in County Durham, then please support the amendment. That's what I will be doing.[1212.15][1212.15](applause).
Councillor Shuttleworth?
Thanks, Chair. Just in case you don't know, I'm the longest-serving member of the council, and I wouldn't back a deal unless it was in the best interest of the people of County Durham and my own constituents, and that's why I'm backing the LA7 deal and asking everybody else to support this amendment. And further reports will be brought to the cabinet in the coming weeks. Thanks.
Councillor Charlton-Lane?
Thank you. Rochelle Charlton-Lane, a councillor for Dean Sidingsham. Very quick question. So councillor Bell was reading from a piece of paper. Can I read that? The letter that you were talking about, Helen? Can I have a read of that letter?
I think you need to take that with councillor Bell outside the meeting, but he did disclose that councillor Marshall had seen it.
Just because if we're being asked to consider things, I'd rather have all of the facts than just spoon-fed what we need to know.[1278.01][1278.01](laughing).
Councillor Hen—
Chair, with your indulgence, before I start, can I first thank all members on all sides of this chamber for their best wishes following my recent illness and spell in hospital. It was very much appreciated. And also—I also want to thank all the nurses and doctors that looked after me that despite massive pressures do a fantastic job here and across this whole region, so I just wanted to say that with your indulgence. Thank you, Chair. Because—I wasn't going to speak, but because my name was mentioned, I just wanted to make the obvious point that until this year, the possibility of a county-wide deal was not on the table. It is—it was put on the table earlier this year after a lot of lobbying by the County Council network, of which I and other members in this room have been members of, and I think that was the right thing to do because it's given all parts of this country the opportunity of a devolution deal. And, you know, so I think we need to thank the County Council network for all the work they have done. So what that means is that the situation this year is clearly different to its been in the past because there is the opportunity of a county-wide deal that simply wasn't there previously. The also—the other thing I want to pick up on, as the Gordon Brown Commission document has been waved around, quite rightly because it's a very important document, and I declare an interest, having been a member of that commission, and described as already the most radical devolutionary programme presented by either of the two big parties in decades by a think tank just yesterday. That document actually gives all areas the opportunity to decide what is best for themselves moving forward. That is the whole purpose of what has been proposed, and that is exactly what this council is doing this morning. It's quite right that the council should have this discussion because all members of this council have a right to speak and vote here, exactly as we're doing now. So I personally don't see anything wrong in having this discussion or debate. It's entirely right that we do so, and it's entirely right that we're able to have this vote between those options that are on the table. And I just end, sorry if I've still got time, with one quick point, because councillor Wilkes said something that's actually quite important, and I haven't seen the details, so I don't know the answers to this question—
One minute.
—but if—it's very important because he seemed to be indicating that no money was at risk if we were part of an LA7 deal, which therefore suggests that the current situation in terms of devolution of transport funding, which goes in at the moment to NECA and back to Durham County Council, he seems to suggest that therefore wouldn't continue or in some way would change. Because, as I say, my understanding is currently that the—that funding, which I think may also include some of the highways funding, goes in to NECA at the moment and then back to Durham County Council. So is it being said that there's going to be a change to that arrangement? Because that's my understanding of what was said, because if there isn't a change to that arrangement, then clearly some of that funding could be at risk, is my understanding. But I, Chair, I appreciate—I've not seen the details of what's in front of people, so I'm not sure that's the case, but I'd be interested in the answer to that question because theoretically, it seems to me there is a risk in terms of some of—
Time to wind.
—transport funding. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Kay?
Thank you, Chair. Do I hold this up and pretend I'm reading? I'll just put it down, shall I? I find it really strange that we're sitting in an authority here with members of three large political groups and beyond that. We've got a number of independents, and I would say to you independents, do you really trust the words of the Conservative government minister? Because if you do, you judge a person by the company he keeps. And let me tell you, if you go along with that, you will be tired with that, and I'll tell—we've heard it twice this morning, I'm sick of hearing this about Labour 100 years, but I'll tell you all something now, I'll put you on notice, because I'll stop pointing and I'll tell you that in 2025, make no mistake, the red wall will be rebuilt, and we'll remember this.[1557.65][1557.65](applause).
Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. What a year. Can I just put something on the record that going back to 2013 onwards, if the minister had offered us a county deal, we would have looked very closely at it, with probably the preference to reach that deal. And just such a deal has been offered to Durham last year, and while stovers including Cornwall have succeeded in getting the best possible outcome for their area, this administration has totally failed. This LA7 deal is a 30-year contract which will entitle the fifth biggest authority to absolutely nothing other than 30 years of horse-trading from a starting position of weakness negotiated from a position of weakness. We become a council in financial distress, with no strategy for growth and now no intention to stand for our people and communities, and most importantly, if this is agreed, the loss of local accountability, and it will never be forgotten. We need an offer which is a starting point, can deliver powers specifically for Durham that gives control over transport and housing, that lays towards own economic growth and puts people closer to power, and not what this does, which is move people the furthest away from it that is possible. Chair, I oppose this amendment.
Councillor Sterling?
Thank you, Chair. I promise I'll keep this short and sweet. I might be stating the obvious here, but there's just something glaring about the original motion. We all want the best for our residents. We all want the best choices and options on the table for our residents. The original motion just reduces everything down to one choice. The amendment gives us all of the choices. Why on earth would you not want that for our residents? So I will be supporting the amendment.[1687.01][1687.01](applause).
Councillor McGee?
Thank you, Chair. I'll start off by giving an apology to the joint administration for what I'm about to say now. We often sit here on this side of the room and say, you know, we're talking about what the problem is with Labour. The problem with Labour is they're not always wrong. First and foremost, they are not always wrong. So that's the problem we have with Labour, they're not always wrong. However, what I would say, what I would say is that the amendment, all the amendment says or states is that we are looking at the best possible deal. If that amendment said that we are ruling out potential for a mayor, I would not support it. Okay? It doesn't say that. What it says is, do you know what? We're going to get the best deal. We are all—I work with some excellent people on our side and I work with some excellent people on the other side. Okay? We are all after the best thing. I think the difference is how we get there. Like anything, the devil is in the detail when it comes to matters like this. And what we've got to do is stop the squabbling, stop the shouting, and get on and get on with doing the business, which is representing our residents and getting the best value for money possible so that we can get it into here and then out the other side, dealing with the residents. And until we stop the minor squabbling and the political portion from both sides—from both sides, Chair, then we're not going to get moving forward. Devil is in the detail when it comes to this, and I generally—in general, I support what Labour are saying. In general, yes, a mayor deal might be the best one, but until I see facts and figures pertaining to where I get the best or where we get the best value for our— best value for our book, then I'm sorry, I can't vote for anything. What that deal, what that amendment states to me is that we are trying to get the best deal for our residents, which is why I will be supporting the amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Point of clarification, Chair, please. Can I just ask, is it not the case that several members on that side have already said, sorry? I'll just use my hand then, rather than my finger. Thank you. Have already said that the leader and the deputy leader have indicated to civil servants and ministers that their preferred option is the LA seven deal. Can I just have clarification that that is correct? Because that is what I am hearing, and therefore what has been said by the two previous speakers regarding what's up there isn't valid at all, because they've already indicated their preferred option. Is that the case, Chair?
Just to clarify, for the purposes of the devolution negotiations, the Secretary of State requested the council's leadership to give an in-principle indication as to what their preference was. That's the starting point of the discussions. Having given that in-principle indication, there's a negotiation, if there's a deal in principle, it goes through the statutory process, and the council has to consider that process before reaching a decision. So it's given an in-principle indication.
We have nobody else requested to speak, and we are approaching the time.
I pressed it a while ago.
You did press it a while ago.
Sorry, councillor boys, we're out of time.
Well, I pressed a while ago.
Yeah, but we extended the time limit for a motion. It's my fault, I hadn't seen that your name was on the list. And I was going to bring councillor Shield in before councillor Marshall. But that point of order's just taken the last few minutes of the hour, so we now need to go to closing down the debate. So it would be for councillor Marshall to give his right, there'll be no further speakers, councillor Marshall to give his right of reply, and then we'll go for the vote on the amendment.
Even though I was in the queue?
Yes, because we've reached time.
But that's human error, like, it's not...
I've only got one sentence.
Councillor Shield won't get, councillor Shield reserved his right to speak, he doesn't get the right to speak either because we've reached time.
So councillor Marshall, can you just give your right for reply, please?
Of course I can, Chair, thank you. It's been quite a long morning, and I'm pleased that council has been able to have a discussion on this. I think I owe some of the coalition leadership some money because it sounds like I've been living rent-free in their heads for a few weeks. I think, Chair, there's a couple of things for me. We've had six or seven members of the cabinet this morning categorically state their preference for an LA seven deal. So they've already determined what the best deal is for County Durham. So anybody who thinks that there's another discussion on that coming back to this chamber for all of our councillors here to have a seat on and have a vote on, this is it. Today is the last time as a council will debate this. It'll go through cabinet, it'll go through whatever statutory consultation process...
The point of order, Chair, is that the case? It won't come back to full council for an ultimate decision?
It will depend on, I think it will depend on the terms of the deal. So the final approval process, it still needs to be determined, but there will be a decision of a meeting of the authority.
Sorry, Chair, I'm led to believe from the discussions I've had with the head of legal that that will be a cabinet decision, it could even be delegated if that was the desire of the leadership. Chair...
The point of order for me, I've never said that, councillor Marshall.
Honestly, I'm not in the business of lying, and I was told that this could be a cabinet decision. And I think you've mentioned two or three times in this meeting, there will be a cabinet decision, this deal in principle, then it will go to public consultation.
But I've never said it would be delegated.
Fair enough. Okay, Chair, I think the point is, right, we've had a long debate this morning, six or seven of the council leadership have said that they want a deal for a seven, totally disregarding now a county deal. It sounds like those negotiations haven't gone anywhere. We've had no confirmation despite all of the political grandstanding, that there's a single penny to be spent in Durham. We've got a letter from the leader, because why should we trust her? The last council meeting, she told us that we'd get our fair share of transport money, £143 million quid.
Just a point of order. That is a point of order. That's an absolute lie.
It's in your writing.
It's an absolute lie. The question I was asked...
Order, please.
Sorry. The question I was asked at the last full council was, would County Durham in a county deal get the transport money? And the answer to that, I categorically said, was false, and that is true. We would not get money in a county deal.
Excuse me, councillor Marshall, you were speaking. Do you want to continue? Order! Councillor Marshall, you were speaking. Would you like to continue?
Sorry, Chair, I do stand by the comments made, and then she's put a letter in writing the next day. She said it was absolutely false, we're going to lose out on any transport money, and here she is giving it up. Chair, the letter's there, everyone's seen it. I think, Chair, let's get it on record. By fighting this, to bring this to this extraordinary meeting, Labour's putting County Durham first. By dragging this whole debate from behind closed doors and out-of-back offices into this chamber, Labour is putting County Durham first. By backing a county deal over being a small part of a mega authority, Labour's putting County Durham first. We're the only ones who have asked our residents, 84% of the responses said that they wanted a county deal. Are you listening? Is the question I would ask. The Tories and Lib Dems are completely out of touch, they're out of the depth, they're not delivering for our communities, and the public will see it. Because when this all comes out, the public will see that they've been misled. Chair, I think if this council supports the best deal for County Durham, it would stand with us and say, we'll not give up on our residents, we'll not give up on a deal to become masters of our own destiny, we'll not put politics before people, Chair, we'll not accept any amendments like this that dilutes down our motion to give them free rein to do whatever they want behind closed doors in secret rooms, Chair. I urge all members to really think about the communities they've been elected to serve and ask the question, do they deserve the decisions to be made about their communities to be made closer to home, or should they be made in a tin and wire?
Time please, the raffle...
Put people of County Durham first and vote against this amendment.
It's going to vote.
Okay, so we are voting on the amendment as moved by councillor Hopgood and shown on screen. It's one in favour of the amendment, two against, three to abstain, and the buzzer will sound for the vote being open.
Yes, councillor Wilkes.
Thank you, Chair. Could I ask, as it's a named vote, that we can see the names on the screen? Thank you.
Named vote?
Yes, councillor Wilkes, thank you for reminding me. It was requested, and 10 members did stand, so the way in which members vote will appear in the minutes. Thank you.
Vote is now...
Four sixty-three against fifty-six, abstentions none. Amendment is carried, it becomes the substantive motion. Since we are out of time, councillor Hopgood, I will invite you to give your reply before we vote again.
Chair, as we're out of time, can we just move straight to the vote?
We'll now go to the vote.
So we're now voting on the same thing, but now as the substantive motion. It's one in favour, two against, three to abstain. If you press the wrong button, pressing the right one corrects your vote. Thank you. The vote is open.
Quick point of clarification, Chair. Just, I referred to the document before, it's page 87, not 83, I'd hate to be... Because I just know it's going to get thrown back. It is, it's definitely 87, okay? Thank you.
We haven't closed the vote yet, so members need to wait to leave the chamber if they wish the vote to be counted.
The vote is now closed. Four, 111 against seven, abstentions one. The motion is carried. Please do not leave the chamber at the moment till I conclude it. Thank you. That concludes today's business for the extraordinary council meeting. I would like to thank everybody for taking part, and to those members of the public and the media who've watched this meeting, thank you for your attendance. John will now draw the raffle ticket for the hammer outside, if you could just sit so. Good luck to everybody. There's the tin, John.